Needed to wait for a quorum to arrive. Now, we do have that quorum. Uh, council members that are in attendance are Sid Oster, Erin Cheatwood online, Mike Johnston, and myself, Mayor Heidi Franco. Welcome, and thank you very much for attending, whether you're online. The first item on our work meeting agenda is a water policy discussion that's going to be led by Russ Funk, our city engineer. We'll turn it over to you, Russ, please.
Thank you, Mayor. So, there's actually numerous things we're going to talk about today with regard to the water policy. We're going to talk about water usage, historic water usage, as it relates to residential units, multifamily units. We're going to talk about our water policy in general, process, timelines for requiring water when it's required as part of the development process. Want to get some input from the council on some ideas about reducing water rights for outdoor water, watering as well. Um, and so there's going to be a lot wrapped into this. This is not an action item, as you know. Tonight, it is a discussion item where we're here to present some information to you, see what, uh, the council feels like we should move forward with in a policy, and then I would plan on later bringing back something for official adoption. So, I am going to start.
Is there any way to make that bigger?
There sure is. Um, I just can't see my mouse. Where did it go? There it is.
It's right there, kind of in your top black.
Is one of these-
By the automatic zoom, the plus.
No, I got it. One of these items here is presentation mode.
Oh, there you go.
Makes it bigger. I think that's probably as good as we're going to do. Um, maybe not. How do I get out of it? Let's actually try. Okay. Let's try something else here. Is there a way to slide that over? No?
No. You just got the plus.
Well, that's what I was going to do, but I was going to try to get rid of the side thing there.
That's okay.
Um, but maybe if I-
Just a little more, just a little more. Let's see if that'll work. You'll have to obviously go up and down and such, but-
Well, to be honest with you, let's just zoom in on the most important part.
Excellent.
And I cannot see the mouse on this thing.
It's down at the bottom. There you go. You slid it. Now you can go down on the side. There you go. Hello, Yvonne.
Okay. I hope that that is something you can see. What I, what I have on the whole entire spreadsheet is our residential, like, single-family residential meter data, usage data for the past 10 years. From that data, we've broken it out into overall, like, yearly, um, daily uses, usage, and then we've broken it out into indoor only. We do that by looking at the winter months, basically, to break out the indoor. And then what I've summarized here on the bottom in this, um, well, let me go here. The bold black in the middle of this is your average daily usage per connection. You can see there's a trend, basically, going down. We're using more and more or less and less water over time, uh, as there's emphasis on water conservation. That is in gallons per day. Down here below, I have, um, acre feet per year for indoor usage only. And then, right here in these items, I've averaged them out, looking at a three-year average, a four-year average, a five-year to 10. What I am proposing or recommending, uh, is that we consider this .19 acre feet for a typical ERU. Now, we need to make some adjustments to that item. Our historic, or our loss through the system, the last three years has averaged about 30%. In order for us to provide that much water, we need to provide 30% more water, pump 30% more water. And so, I've applied that 30% factor, uh, and then there's an adjustment here. So that puts that .19 to a .25. In addition to that, um, our water rights in this area generally come from irrigation shares. Uh, irrigation shares in Wasatch Irrigation, Timpanogas Irrigation, other irrigation companies. When we get those irrigation shares and, uh, we convert them to be used for indoor use or municipal use, um, there's typically an adjustment that's made to account for diversion depletion. We can, we can divert the full amount, but we're only allowed to delete, deplete, sorry, a smaller amount. And so, accounting for that, uh, I have to make another adjustment. That puts that .19 to a .36. So, if there's support from the council, my recommendation is to have our new water requirement per standard ERU, residential ERU, be .36. Um, I will tell you right now, that is lower than most municipalities out there. Historically in the state, um, without any other data, what the recommendation has been is 400 gallons per day. Um, and that, without any of those other factors, turns out to .45. A lot of municipalities use that. Um, but this is based on actual data, and considering the longevity of it, I feel pretty comfortable with that recommendation. I wouldn't want to go lower because there's things, we need to be, we need to be somewhat conservative. There's different things that happen in drought years. There's different things that happen, uh, where we just, the use could go back up, other things. And so I feel comfortable with that number. Any questions about that?
Any questions? Go ahead, Ryan.
Thank you so much. I really think this is great. Tell, so, do you think we're, so we've replaced all of our lines on the east side of town?
Yeah.
I think, I'm hoping that's cutting our, this 30% system loss bothers me. I'm sure it bothers you, so. Um, it is interesting that our water usage is dropping over the last 10 years. I kind of think some of that must be with fixing our system, too.
Well, I do.
Particularly, particularly the last two or three years, which is really the lowest. I mean, do you think that's true?
Remember, these meter number, these numbers up in the upper table are at the meter, so they're not considering losses.
Okay.
So that is actually, uh, there's a couple-
I thought you would have taken, like, everything we pumped from our wells and then divided it by the-
We do that as well. So, so we, we analyze, um, the, the data in this table. This is what the meter data shows. We compare that against what we produce. That's where that 30% number is coming from.
Is that dropping?
So, in the past, it's been closer to 15%. Uh, in the last three years, it's consistently been around 30. We're trying to figure out and research what that is. I just, I don't want to get too lost in this because we, I know we only have limited time, but I think there's multiple components. There's leakage. We are fixing that. That should improve over time. I think there's theft. I think there's water theft, people connecting to hydrants or to our hydrants or having illegal connections. I think that contributes to it. And then also, a lot of our meters are aging. Um, by the end of either this year or next, we'll have all of those older meters out of our system. So this will continue to improve over time, and as it does, we can continue to make adjustments. But as it sits right now, uh, I think this is where we are.
Less technology, right? Just on new construction with Waterwise and stuff like that?
Yeah, it's been pretty consistent, though, for 10 years. I mean, toilets and every new home is, you know, the old homes probably, they may still have showerheads and toilets that are, aren't efficient, but everything built does.
Um, let me-
So Yvonne had-
Good trend. I'm, I'm really happy with this trend here in Utah especially.
Mike, are you, do you have more? Yvonne's next after you.
Oh, I'll, I'll save my time.
Great. All right, go ahead, Yvonne.
I was just going to say, it's actually just a comment, so you can go back to any more questions. Um, I spoke to someone who, um, is with the fire department, and they said that they have replaced many of those fire hydrants because they said as well that they saw that there was a 30% loss and that they were recognizing that as well. So, I'm hoping that maybe that change will-
Yeah, we, we have replaced a lot of those hydrants.
In a lot of ways, yeah.
They replace hydrants. Does that mean they put the locking feature on it?
It's locked.
Yeah, so I, I don't know of any hydrants that they've replaced, but we, as a city, are moving forward with a project to put a locking nut on the top that would keep people from accessing them.
I know that in our neighborhood, there's a brand, there's a new one there, so.
Okay. Well, good. Like I say, I hope that that increases over time. I hope that that 30% goes down over time. As it does, again, we can make adjustments, but I think based on, uh, where we are and, and where we fit in, that's, that's a lot lower than a lot of people.
Will this be something that we'll notice by next year? Around this time next year, will this be something that the council will see a significant drop as far as the loss of, of, maybe see that 30% go down or?
Yvonne, I hope so. I, I have expected it to go down as we've, as we've been working on our system for the past three years. I've expected it to go down. Uh, we're taking some steps as staff to Public Works and Engineering together, mostly Public Works, to be honest with you, taking some steps to try to identify those losses, and I hope that it will go down. I absolutely believe that it has to with the improvements that we're making to our system.
So, yeah, I'm with, with you. This is a great, great trend, and, yeah, it's overdue.
Good.
.45 is a lot.
Sorry, Sid. Erin, did you want to say anything?
Do you, Russ? Quick question. To what extent are, is the usage by home, so kind of that, that average usage skewed by the reality that a lot of the more recent conditions are second homes and not lived in all the time?
Yeah, it's, and it's really hard to say how much it's been, it's impacted. It's absolutely a possibility, but still, uh, regardless, and I, I think we have to just look at overall average. I think that's the only way to do it, to, to make sure that we're being fair with the amount of water that we're asking for. So it can, it can, absolutely. The other, and I'll talk a little bit about this, but there's other factors to consider in multifamily versus single family as well, and we'll get into some of that discussion here in a bit.
Do you expect, as a follow-up question, do you expect that we, is, is this something we need to just check on, um, every couple of years and, and potentially raise back up? Because I know that the next impact here is an impact fee discussion, right? Or a usage discussion, uh, understanding, but is this something we need to kind of expect to see go up and down over time?
What I, excuse me, what I would anticipate is that each time we update our water master plan, uh, our impact fee study, that we will also evaluate this. Now, we, we review usage every year. This is something that we report to the state every year, but that water master plan is, um, I think it's about every five years, and it gives us the opportunity to consider about the last five years' trends. So that's kind of what I anticipate, but we, we could do it more often if we feel like there's a significant change and it's, and it's worth doing.
Erin, anything else? Russ, I have a quick-
That's all.
I, I'm concerned about the larger homes that are being built because even though this is, you know, good for averages, um, I feel like the homes that are 4,000 square feet or above could easily use more with hot tubs or lap pools or whatever else they might have in their home. And they would probably go over this kind of lower average. Do we have any way to pull out of the data for larger square footage?
No, other than just long-term average. However, I would, I would, I would, uh, present another, uh, thought on that, is that many of these larger homes are, are really people's retirement homes, forever homes. A lot of these larger homes are being built by people that only two individuals, senior individuals, live in full-time. I really feel like the bigger trend is going to be in our apartment and three-bedroom type units where you're going to see higher use.
Surely there is that. Surely there is that. But because, you know, short-term rentals are also allowed in our city, that's a potential for even greater average use, to me.
It, it is, absolutely.
All of these things, how, how do you try to account for all these things with the lower average?
And even now, it's hard to get really reliable data in our system because, uh, again, right now, these are individual meters, and we're looking at an average on them. Uh, even our multifamily meters, they don't often meter the same type of unit. Like, we'll have a meter that meters 15 one-bedroom and 15 three-bedroom or something like that. It's really hard to break it out, but this is just strictly residential, not apartments, not, not, um, multifamily. And so this data that we're looking at right here, all we can do is continue to monitor averages. If it does go up, Mayor, we can make an adjustment again. We're seeing that we're using more water based on the, the trends, and we would then make an adjustment up.
Could we scoot this chart over just a touch so I can see the first columns up to the top?
Yes.
Because that wasn't, sorry, as clear as I would like to see. Maybe I should just look it up here on my screen.
That's just fine. So, all, all you have on the left-hand side is months. You're, you're running January through December. The green highlights in the mid, and then it's just, um, gallons, and then the green highlights are the summer months, the white highlights are the months. And so when we try to separate out indoor versus outdoor, we just look at those indoor, or those winter months.
So, sellers also have to dedicate rights for outdoor usage.
Yes.
Your recommendations?
We're not talking about that yet.
Okay.
This is just indoor, indoor only, and again-
I'm just saying that 2015 was so high for, um, you've got 27, 37, 166. I can't see what that other, or what the heading is on that.
2015?
I don't know what you're talking about. I mean-
Or that column right there, is that the-
This is 2015, so these are best years, basically, from 2015 to now.
And what you have right there in green, what are those numbers there? Because I can't see what's over there.
So the green highlights are the summer months, the, the ones that are white.
Was used. Is that correct?
I just, I just have a total here. I hadn't broken those out separately, but basically you have the annual usage at the bottom, broken out by months, a number of connections, which for a single-family home is the same as an ERU, so that's what's next. From there, you break it out into the average use per year, so that will include some outdoor watering. And then down here, it's just indoor because we're only looking at those indoor months. And so I'm trying to just kind of point out the things that are really relevant here, but let's move on if we can. Can we move on to apartments? So the next thing, one of the things that we've been really asked a lot about is, hey, we've got apartments coming in, smaller units, that likely aren't using as much water as a single-family home. Shouldn't there be a different requirement for those apartments? And just for your information, in practice, what we've been doing is, uh, an ERU, an equivalent residential unit, we've been charged to all units with the exception of one-bedroom or studio, which we've been charging half. So that's been our, our policy, but we've, we've gone back and we've looked at the data, and so that's what I want to show you here next, or try to. One thing you need to know about all data is it's never perfect. There's always little weird things. For example, there's a, um, there was some significant water leaks that one development had in the hundreds of thousands of gallons, uh, per year. And so, I've tried to exclude that data from this. I've tried to make it as accurate as possible by trying to account for those things, but no data is perfect. But anyway, what I have here is apartment complexes in the city. We have Prestige 1 and 2, we have Brook Lane. I'm going to zoom in a little bit more. I've tried to, I'm trying to make it so you can see everything, but it just is too hard to see, so. That's probably better. Brook Lane, Elbridge, Tim, Timber Mill, Liberty Station, Wing Point, Ranch Landing, Village on 12th, Valley Station. We have a few more complexes in the city, but there's just not enough occupancy yet to have it be reliable data, so we've excluded those. And then I've gone through here. We have one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom, and then there's different, um, other assortments of what one meter is actually metering. So, for example, one and three bedrooms, we have 155 units and three-bedroom. Two and three bedrooms, three and four bedrooms. And so it's hard to break individually what they use when we just have them metered together. But what's, I think, most relevant here is looking at the one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and three-bedroom data. So what I've done is come up with a total number of units right here for one-bedroom, 55, and then I've multiplied, well, this is just a weighted average. So, on average, those 55 one-bedroom units use .07 acre feet, uh, per year. Two-bedroom, done the same thing. The result of that was .11. Three-bedroom was .17. Based on the non-adjusted, um, usage of single-family of .19, I've just compared those, .7 compared to .19, and calculated that out. That one-bedroom, based on that data, uses, um, 39%. Uh, two-bedroom uses 60%, three-bedroom, 89%.
Of ERUs, right?
Of the ERU amount, yes. It's not square footage, it's just water usage, just water usage. So, based on water usage, those are the actual calculated percentages. I am recommending a little bit different numbers. Uh, I'm recommending for a one-bedroom or a studio that we charge 50%. For a two-bedroom, I'm recommending that we charge 80%. And for a three-bedroom and higher, three-bedroom, townhome, anything else, basically, 100% of an ERU. Down here, I have the acre feet that that would be, based on the .36. So if a .36 acre feet per ERU is required for a house, then half that, .1, would be required for a one-bedroom or studio. Two-bedroom would be .29, three-bedroom, anything else would be .36. There are some reasons that I am, uh, making that recommendation. One is, um, these are significantly impacted, um, by senior housing, these one-bedroom, and that's not always the case. We also have other data. For example, we have 54 units, um, one and three bedroom that use .14. Three-bedrooms, they're using more water than our standard, uh, residential of .19. And so there's a lot to consider. You, you can't just go based on some units. You have to consider all of the usage, if that makes sense. So, maybe, maybe two-bedroom is easier to explain. So, the calculated average is .11 for a two-bedroom. A three-bedroom is, um, .17. But if I go over here and look at two and three bedrooms, other apartment complexes, they're at .28. They're higher than our standard residential unit. And so, I'm just trying to be, um, somewhat conservative in the amounts that we, uh, that we require.
And you have a bigger dataset on that one, too?
Yes.
Yeah.
The other thing, I, I did look at, just for comparison, um, the Twin Creek, well, this is both service districts, it's all the social service districts, but this is required. So their standard ERU is .45. They're just following that state requirement that we talked about before. Um, townhomes, they charge 100% of an ERU. Condominiums, 100%. Apartments, they say 1,500 square feet, they use 80%. Uh, and then the other one they do is studio, 50%. And so I think that that's comparable. 1,500 square foot, uh, 80% is comparable to a two-bedroom. There's going to be lots of different configurations out there. But I think that's a reasonable, uh, place to meet on that, and that's my recommendation. That's my recommendation is that, that we, for studio or one-bedroom, we do 50%. For two-room, 80%. And anything bigger, 100% per ERU. And then that gives you the water right, uh, approximates there. Yeah, another, another thing that concerns me is we did try to get, uh, data on occupancy where we could, but we didn't have necessarily good data all the time. The other thing is, some of these are, uh, owned units, and they're used as second homes, and we don't have all of that information as well. I know that the Ranch Landing, no, um, well, yeah, Ranch Landing, too, but Village on 12th, I know those are owned units, and I know that, I know several people that have second, um, homes or second units in them. So, it's hard to account for all of those things. Our data isn't perfect, but I think this is fair recommendation.
Some of those, at least for Ranch Landing, um, it's owned by other, by an individual but renting out to, to whomever.
And that's true, too.
Which sometimes is very large families, just saying. Because my family, my daughter just moved from Ranch Landing, and there were quite a few where you had three-bedroom apartments with quite a few people in there.
Yeah, you look at this, and that, and that's my, that's my biggest concern about doing anything with three-bedroom is, is, again, I'm going to go back to it. We, we have a lot of homes in this valley that are senior couples, two people living in those homes. We have a lot of apartments with families, and as housing affordability gets, housing affordability gets worse, I'm going to see more of that. You can see Ranch Landing, they're, they're averaging more than their, uh, residential unit on its own. They're .24 or higher. So, I'm very, very, uh, uncomfortable with giving any, anything different than a full ERU bedroom, so. Okay. Uh, any questions or discussion?
Anyone? Erin, do you have anything?
No, I'm good, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay.
Uh, wait, 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 Mike?
Oh, yep. Sorry, Mike.
This is really good. I, I would just think, I'm thinking of my own situation. Homes ebb and flow with the number of people over the years, and a family of five, six, eight, and then in 20 years, it's a family of two, for another 20 years. I mean, that's, so, so I think the average is, I mean, the city just needs to stay whole on water usage, which is an average.
It's an average.
I mean, I'm thinking of my neighborhood, there's homes with five, six people, and there's homes with two, many homes with two. And they're, they're, that, that's how they are for the many, many years. So, you average six and two, and, I mean, our real average is what, 3.15 or something? Units, people per home. I mean, that's our average, so. It seems to make good sense. I was going to ask, do, do we also meter sewage out of leaving Heber City? Don't they, isn't there a meter?
We have some master meters, yes. We don't, I guess when I-
I should say, okay, well, it's not all, it's not Twin Creeks anymore, but-
So there's, there's a meter, obviously, where we go into the treatment plant. There's a line that comes from Heber, and there's a line that comes from Midway. Both of those are metered. We have other meter locations where Twin Creek's, uh, flow enters into the city, and that's metered, but that, those are the only places that are metered.
Because I know, Mayor, you know this, too. Uh, we're, we're running at about 200 gallons per day per ERU coming through the sewer plant. Maybe it was 201 or 199, it was 200. So that's a good, it's half of what the state says that we use.
The 400, yeah.
Which, we don't use, we use 200. Valleywide is 200.
Yep.
Per ERU. So I think when you're sitting here, that's what we're seeing in the water use, too.
I agree. Yeah, I think it makes sense with the, with the numbers we're seeing, so. Okay. If it's okay, then I'm going to go on to, um, water policy. Sorry. Go ahead, Mayor.
So we can try to meet the other deadline, just saying, five minutes. Does that sound good?
It does.
Thank you.
Let me just really be fast here.
Thank you.
What I did with this water policy or the recommended changes is, um, we have updated our development approval processes. This used to be written so that at preliminary approval, certain things were required. Well, not every application goes through preliminary approval. Every application goes through either preliminary appro, well, not even that, but most applications go through preliminary approval or site plan approval, so I've updated it to account for that. The other big change that this water policy does is that, before it said, you got to give us the water upfront for whatever development you're doing, no matter what it is, residential, mixed-use, or commercial. The problem is, I don't know on a commercial development how much water they're going to need until I know what is going to go in there. Meaning, if there, if it's a retail store, uh, they're going to use a lot different water than a restaurant or a car wash. There's no way for us to say, this is how much water you're going to need until we know more about it. And so, the recommendation here is that for any residential use, you have to turn that water in before you either start construction or record the plat. That gives us as a city what we need in order to do that. For commercial, there's a proposal in here that we would delay that requirement or that calculation until the time of a building permit. This is actually what we're doing now, because there's no other way to do it. So if it's a shell building, fine, guess what? You don't require very much water for that. You require the outdoor require, or outdoor water requirements, and then you say, as soon as you tell me what you're putting in there, we'll calculate what water you're going to need, and you'll have to turn that in before you get a building permit. So those are basically the reflections of, those are the changes that are reflected in here. There's a lot of lines, but basically that's what it is. And, uh, for time, I'm going to just stop there and see if there's any questions.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Mike.
So I had this, and I agree.
Okay.
I, my question is like on commercial, so what happens when there's, say, multi-tenants? like, um, I think where my dentist is out here by Walmart, and it's a, it's a building with shared bathrooms. Is that the same? Or how, or you, can't you calculate it based on the bathrooms and the fixtures generally?
Yes. And what, what we're going to do is, is do it based on the building permit. If the building permit is putting those bathrooms in, like a shell building with a bathroom, we're going to do, we're going to do our best to calculate that based on that. And then if they come in and finish another space and say, we're doing this in this space, and it's going to require more, they'll have to provide the addition.
If a restaurant moves in, there's an additional water requirement because it's a restaurant.
Correct.
Rather than a dentist.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you for keeping the Tepanogus Class D water shares, that language there, just kind of moving it around slightly.
Yeah, we just, it seemed like it was duplicating itself twice there. And so we took the best language from both sections and merged it together.
We're like four years into that, seven years, aren't we? Four, five years?
Having that policy in place?
Yes.
Yeah.
And we getting those payments from the little brokay to
We have.
defray the costs.
So, yes, what, initially, before this policy went into place, we did it different. We escrowed that money, and we set it in an account, and we charged against it for those unused lots. After this policy went into effect, we started doing this, where we just take the seven years, and we put it in, and that's what we're doing. So we're doing that now. We still have some of those old escrow accounts, but we'll implement as we go.
Okay. Thank you, Russ.
Okay. Lastly, because I know we're really short on time, uh, is just, there has been a lot of people asking for, hey, why are you charging, we're going to use less water than three acre feet per acre outside. Um, we want to do drip system, we want to do zerscaping. Isn't there a way that you can use less water? My concern has always been, well, guess what? Uh, there's nothing that guarantees that once we approve your home or approve whatever it is you're doing, um, that somebody else isn't going to come down the road and change that, use more water than you provided. And so, but I recently found out about the county's policy, um, that I think was good. I just got to figure out where I'm going here, back to the, so the county, uh, adopted a C. That's not it.
Is it the JSST outdoor? Okay.
So they adopted this policy, and I thought that they had some really good, uh, information in here that would both be fair to developers and also protect the city. So they did offer a Waterwise, um, dedication option. The things that would protect the city in here, basically, they, they did a study, how much water does Waterwise drip irrigation systems use? Um, and they came up with one point six acre feet per acre instead of three. And they have down there the, where that data came from here in this, this section right here in one. But basically, the important things in here, in my mind, are, um, item six, landscape areas, uh, landscape areas within the boundary of single-family lots are not eligible for the Waterwise dedication here. And the reason is, again, if somebody owns a home, they can, they can go change it at any time. They can do different things. And so that requirement in there, in order for this to apply, I thought was important. And then nine, uh, homeowners' association covenant should be established to ensure long-term compliance with approved landscaping plan. And so as I was talking about this with them, they basically said, it's got to be HOA common space that's controlled by the HOA, not individual lots, not anything fence, just controlled, uh, common space, we will apply this. And so I thought those things were good to protect the city and also be more fair with that policy. And so I guess my question is, is, is this, uh, idea or something similar supported by the council?
Yes.
I would, I just, we just have to have a little enforcement mechanism there, because I don't know how it would ever be checked. You see what I mean? And what kind of, you know, it's always like, let's put more requirements on, but then nobody will check those requirements over time. And then who knows what they'll be using.
And that's exactly the problem, is that it's not going to be pleased. There's not really, it has to be an HOA that is going to be stable and there, and they're going to enforce it and keep it that same way. And without that, there's no, there's no way to do it. I mean, I guess you could, you could hire somebody to go check these every once in a while, or, or do something. But the whole idea, I think, is that it's HOA maintained common space that individual landowners are not going to have the ability to go change without going through the HOA. So there's some, there's also several other things in here to provide protection, but those were
Other communities, they do hire somebody to go out, like down south and desert, can make sure, and they give them warnings, and then they can tick it. But, yeah, up here, again, it's staffing, the ability to staff it and regulate. So it's hard to do.
Well, if there's no enforcement mechanism in there, right, about infractions or whatever it is Jeremy thinks is appropriate here, then it's, it's hard to just put these wishes into laws and wish that everybody will follow them over time. Go ahead, Mike.
So how, how does this play to commercial projects? Can that fit? Because a commercial project is pretty easy to say, this is a landscaping plan, it's put in, it's approved with the site plan. Let's just pick a, pick Walmart, you know?
Yeah, I, I think it could. We would just need to make sure that it, that it is in our agreement with them, and that there is, and then there is a property owners' association or somebody that's going to enforce that over time. And we could put more into this. This was
I would like commercial, I, I think that's the biggest waste of, I mean, I don't think any commercial should ever really have grass, just non-used turf. So I think this ought to, I would like to focus this. Honestly, we're not really, almost all growth in Heber City is in Twin Creek's SSD now, or North Village SSD, sorry. So they're going to really control this, and they, and this is their policy. But I'm also thinking, we've had agreements now with developments that saying you, you're limited to one thousand square feet of landscaping. That's it. So I see a conflict between that and six, where it says, well, you know, these are single-family homes, and you're limited to one thousand square feet. But then we also say, well, you can't use it because you're a single-family home. I, I think there should be, I, I want Waterwise landscaping, and I want minimal landscaping, especially in the, in the hills. So I'd like to make sure this works for these large, these projects where we are limiting the water usage.
And my understanding is on those that they are limiting, but they're, but they're saying that thousand square feet is solid. You're anticipating that that's
We're anticipating, I get it, yeah, but no more. So it could be a ten thousand square foot lot, but they're only, they only get a thousand square feet of, of landscaping, whatever type it is.
So their, their policy, which I think is a good policy, is those individual lots, yes, we're going to only charge you for the thousand square foot feet, but it's not eligible for the reduced one point six.
Oh, I, okay.
Right. Cause that's their choice individually, if they want to do it. The HOA is not enforcing it in our city ordinance. It's just any homeowner that wants to
I was mixing up the one six. Okay.
So, uh, I guess, Mayor, to your point, there's nothing in here that prohibits us from enforcing it. In fact, there's things that we can rely on to enforce it. It's just a policy decision as to whether or not the council wants to put, hire somebody that's going to enforce it, or.
Russ, just to kind of wrap this up, so sorry, everybody, we started late, and we're trying to keep up with, um, the, the agenda. Russ, will you bring this back to us with the ideas that we discussed? And does that mean your ordinance will be added to, to reflect these NVSS, I'm sorry, JSST outdoor water policies?
It sounds to me like that is supported as well with the, with the addition of, we need to make sure commercial is somehow incorporated into that. So that is my plan, is to take this information that I've shared today. I think that basically everything I shared was supportive. And so I'm going to put that all together in some kind of, and by the way, this is a strange place for our water policy. It's under the, it's under the impact fee section, and it's under the fee schedule. It may need to be moved somewhere else, and I'll coordinate with me on that. But that's the idea, is I'm going to bring back a new water policy that's going to outline these things that we talked about, and we'll bring it for action.
Very good. Very good. Let's make sure we clean up the code part. And so you might have to repeal it under the one section to put it under the other. Okay?
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Everybody good. Aaron, did you have anything else before we move on? Okay.
No, I don't.
Okay, thank you, Aaron. We're going to move on, everyone, to the next agenda item in the work meeting. That is a discussion of the Harvest Village Public Infrastructure Districts or PIDs, number one and number two. And Tony, we'll turn that time over to you, please.
Hey, thank you. The agenda materials are not under the work meeting. Just wanted to point, those are underneath the action agenda item. Uh, this item is returning from the last meeting. It's a request for a PID, a Planned Infrastructure District, uh, for Harvest Village. And we held a public hearing. Council asked for us to come back with some information comparing Harvest Village to the Jordanell. I can briefly go through that, or I can go through it in detail. Uh, basically, Harvest Village is a five percent value of, as opposed to ten percent for Jordanell Ridge. And what that means is ten percent of total value of, of the, the PID would be oriented to enhanced infrastructure, uh, public facility. Uh, the reason for that difference is, uh, Jordanell Ridge is a significantly larger recreational, uh, area with sixty-seven hundred residential units versus Harvest Village's three hundred and thirty-two units. Uh, Harvest Village has a hundred and thousand square feet of commercial. Uh, Jordanell Ridge, I guess TBD on how much commercial they're going to have. Um, the total infrastructure cost difference, uh, thirty million dollars and thirty-eight acres versus Jordanell Ridge's two hundred and fifty million and three thousand acres. Uh, the, the facilities, sorry, I probably should be in Mark Medley's memo here. That's a little bit more detail. Mark Medley's the one that did the analysis here. Let's see if I can find that here. Oh, here it is. Sorry. Um, uh, so Jordanell Village also has, uh, four or five, uh, different PID, uh, districts as opposed to two in the Harvest Village. Uh, you can see, uh, city park, ice ribbon, splash pads, clubhouses, bowling alley, pool, game room. Uh, in, we've also got an art district, city park, performing arts center, uh, gym, barn, and, uh, Jordanell. Let's see. And then Harvest Village, um, see summary of their stuff. I'm going to have to go back to the other document.
Okay if we rank those as a council?
Well, it's, this is a legislative action. It's your prerogative to
Could you pull up the list? That's a good idea.
Yeah, for Harvest Village, yeah.
What do you mean? Rank them in order of
Them in the order of preference.
Maybe not tonight, but we could, it'd be good, something to talk about.
Tonight is the approval of it in the action items. So you've got to, got to decide.
There we go. Transit Center, uh, public art, pro-placid-wide Wi-Fi perimeter trail, and creek and pond connectivity. Um, I did see Neil was online. I think Ryan was, um, petitioner, so probably invite
Mr. Goldman's online. Mr. Goldman, you're, you're welcome to come off mute and be able to respond. Thank you very much. Can you speak? Just so we know you can speak.
Can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you very much. Okay, Mike, did you want to proceed with your ranking ideas?
Well, I actually like the ranking as it's, if, if that said, one, two, three, four, five, that is my ranking right there.
That is your ranking. Okay. Anybody else have, anybody else have concerns or questions about that? Okay, Aaron, this is your time to speak if you do, if you can see them on the screen.
No concerns with that ranking.
Okay. All right, Tony, please go ahead.
Okay, so, uh, public hearing was the, uh, last, um, action with council. Uh, to finalize council's, um, authorization of this is, uh, passing the resolution that's, uh, on the agenda later tonight. Uh, there's some work that we need to do as staffed with the Lieutenant Governor's Office. Um, my understanding, Jeremy, is that we need to submit a request like we, similar that we do to annexations. And I, so I've set up a meeting with you and Trina tomorrow to kind of talk about finalizing that detail, send a request to Lieutenant Governor's Office. We got the, the MyLAR maps were brought into my office today, and they're ready for sure. Um, but certainly now, if, if you struggle with this list, it's kind of your time to, it sounds like most of you are gaining a comfort level with it.
I have a, just a questions about the board transition, um, down on page ten of the governing document. Uh, but does anybody have any other questions first or concerns?
I have a question. Um, so Jeremy?
Yes.
With this, is there not a referendum? And they have not gathered signatures yet. The understanding was, is that they have their court date in July for the other group that is bringing forth a referendum against the Harvest Village and, um, crossings.
Yep, that's correct.
So I'm, I'm, I guess my question is, is why are we having a discussion about a PID if there still hasn't been a decision, a, a court decision regarding the referendum?
So according to state code, there's no stay to continue
Okay.
during the period that this is pending until, the stay doesn't go into effect until they had actually gathered signatures
Okay.
to get it on the ballot.
Okay.
So until that point, um, thing just kind of moves forward as though there, there wasn't anything. Once, if they prevail, um, uh, in this, um, litigation, they'd then be able to go back and start collecting the signatures. If they get to the point where they have enough signatures, then at that point, the stay would be in effect.
And it's a stay. Okay, thank you.
Does the Lieutenant Governor's Office verify those signatures?
Yeah.
Joey Grangerwood. Okay. Just wondering what that process is. Um, any other questions before I ask about the transition of the board? Um, I'm looking at page ten on B, on, um, section six, VI Board of Trustees. And if you could do the B, Tony, B one, two, three, transition to the elected board on page, well, it's, I'm sorry, it's page twelve op, but it's page ten on the actual sheet. Thank you. Right there. I, I'm just wondering why it takes, okay, this, yeah, it's taking fifty percent of the certificates of occupancy in District One or District Two before one person out of the three board members finally has a citizen, or I should say, property owner petition. That's a lot of property owners that would come into PID one or PID two. And I realize that the developer's taking the risk with the PID, and you want to be able to control that risk as best as you can by being on this board. But the, you have half of your property occupied, and then only give up one on the board. I just feel like there's a better tipping point from where the developer is running the PID and making sure it's financed and making sure it's paid versus when the actual property owners that buy from you have participation. I'm just wondering if we could do it a little differently. In other PIDs, we did a thirty-three, sixty-six, ninety, something percent for that last person at ninety percent that they would then give up. I'm wondering if there's a middle ground we could meet, instead of waiting till the fifty percent, then the seventy-five percent, and then the ninety percent, where the actual property owners would then be able to participate in the PID and, and have that voice to say, yes, you can refinance, there's a lower rate out there. You see what I mean? Or, you know, be able to get that information back to the property owner better than just the three who started. Mr. Goldman, or you, or yourself, what, what do you think?
Let me defer to Andy or Neil to answer initially on this.
So Neil, you know I've asked this before.
Yeah, sure. Um, Mayor, I certainly respect this. And I can tell you, I, I don't think that we're here, quite honestly, wanting to stay on this board any longer than we need to be. So I, I would start with just a statement of, we're open to restructure this, uh, this transition. It has to be amicable to all parties. Um, you know, I think this is a standard approach that our district attorney felt comfortable with. Um, but it, I, I would say, we are comfortable if you would like to take a look at some other numbers.
Uh, I, I don't know if the rest of the city council is, but I, I'm just bringing it up, trying to look at those future property owners' interest, that they're really not able to have a voice until seventy-five percent of that property sold, or at least, you know, given a certificate of occupancy. Uh, granted, you might be renting them, you might be leasing them at that point. But I still feel that there's going to be enough people that will want to understand and be able to participate in the PID, uh, that you should be able to get them involved. And I would think that would be definitely before seventy-five percent for at least two to have that opportunity. So that, that's where I'm coming from.
Yeah, I'd be willing to put my, my voice to say, that does make sense to me to, to kind of shift that up a little bit. Neil, obviously, there's a reason that you came with the numbers you came. Is there, uh, uh, understanding that you want it to be amenable? Is there some reason that it's not the thirty-three, sixty-six that we've done before with the city?
Question just, is that, I, I didn't see that. Is this what is within Jordanell Ridge? The thirty-three percent, sixty-six percent, et cetera?
I thought, I thought it was I thought, I thought it was, Jeremy, but obviously-
Can we go and take a look at that?
Right now, Mayor, sorry.
Maybe I proposed it before for Jordan L Ridge, but-
I think this is a fairly standard-
I understand.
So, yeah, we could look at Jordan L Ridge.
So pardon it, sorry to jump in here, but actually, that that we are looking at is Jordan L Ridge. I don't know if this is their final one, this might be-
I'm sorry then, I proposed it for Jordan L Ridge. I'm sure I did. Because I am concerned about the property owners having participation in the PID. And as much as you want to sell the, I'm sure that they also want to be to know what the PID is doing because they have to pay such higher property taxes, and that would seem to even want them to be more involved in the, given those high taxes every year. So I'm just suggesting that, sorry, I didn't remember on Jordan L Ridge, but again, I'm looking out for your future property owners, and I would hope you would consider, you know, maybe 40%, 60%, and then the 90%, just because you're going to be able to allow that citizen participation, and then they'll have more buy-in to what will potentially be much, much higher property taxes.
Sure, we could look at that, but the fact of the matter is, Mayor, that the PID money will have already been spent long before the 50th, 51st person moves in.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. You're right. But then you have the long-term financing or refinancing.
It's the financing and the refinancing.
Right. Plus that administration fee that you would think the people would say, wow, you know, I need to make sure that that's being spent correctly and understand, you know, what's going on there.
Agreed.
Just saying. So-
Mayor, I think that that is a very fair ask. My question would be, if we look at this document, we have three numbers here, right? We have trustee one, trustee two, and trustee, and we have different thresholds there. The third trustee, I think you're okay with at 90%. The, it was for trustee one and trustee two. Are you asking to lower both of those, or would you perform, trustee one goes down to 40% and we keep-
40%, and then either 60, 65%, so you can get the public participation. Again, they have to be elected. They, you know, you have to help them understand that, hey, there's a pending election here, and if you want to participate, you know, you're going to have to run. And I don't even know how those elections go down, or who holds those elections. You see what I mean? Jeremy, I don't know. How do we, I mean, is it a private election, like an HOA? Okay.
It's a district election, so typically, probably hold those, I mean, these are districts the same as like a water sewer district. So typically, water and sewer districts hold their elections at the same time as municipal elections. And then they'll-
We don't have those here where we elect those kind of districts.
So other places where they do have those, they'll have elections, and typically, they're run just the same way where the county, they'll contract with the county to run that election, but it will just be for their area, and then they'll pay the county to actually run that election.
Again, I'm just looking out for future citizens because they will come to us to complain, just so you know. And so we say, oh, how do we stop some complaints? Well, hey, at 40%, you're going to be able to get a person elected, right? At 60 or 65%, you're going to be able to get a second person elected. And if they say, wow, it's 50% until we get somebody elected, that's the kind of complaint that we'll get. That's where I'm coming from.
Counterbalance is that their costs then go up because they're, that person is then paid.
But so are, so are the trustees.
No, you're not. Unless you live in the district, there's no salaries.
You have to be a resident of the district to get paid as a trustee.
I thought the trustees could pay themselves $50,000 a year for their administrative costs.
That goes to the administrative costs for legal and it doesn't go to the trustees.
I understand, but also those costs are not, we're not watching them, so I'm not sure how they'll go down. Okay, that was just my suggestion. We've gone too long on this.
I can just say, I think from the developer's standpoint, I think there, I mean, I don't think this is probably a big issue. I think the bigger issue is probably going to be getting developed, getting residents who want to be on the board. Who want to be on the board because-
Now, Jeremy, 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 let's be optimistic about citizens and citizenship in the future. Come on. Now, we've spent enough time here. Is there any other concerns that you or Mr. Goldman or Tony want to say?
No, I'm good. Neil?
Okay. Any other questions? Oh, go ahead, Neil. Anything else you'd like to add?
No, I think that that's just it. I would just simply say, if we're using this as a working session, it would be good to understand, Mayor, we certainly respect your opinion on this, so asking maybe fellow council if they would make any, any movement right here. I mean, this, let's work that out right now so we can be productive in the next phase of tonight's meeting.
Well, you'll be coming back in about, I hate to say two hours, but at least by, I would think within a couple hours, you would be back or sooner. And if the, Sid's got a question. Go ahead.
So I'm fine with the 50, 75, 90 because it's standard in, in most practices, so I think I'm fine with it.
Okay, thank you, Sid. Anyway, we will bring you back, and we'll see if any other city council have further questions, but sorry to make you wait. We're going to move on to our regular meeting. Is that all right, everyone?
So, sorry, just go back to Mike's point. So do we want, so right now, it says the district shall include the following enhanced park recreation and transportation improvements, and we have a list. Do we want to create it, say, in this order? And, you know, they-
That could be part of the motion.
Jeremy, let me just, can I just clarify something right there? We're not ordering those in terms of looking for, our intention is to do all of those. So I want to be upfront, we're trying to go beyond here.
Yeah, and I'm just asking the council, I mean, I know you guys intended, you know, put that, but if we want to have some language that says, and priorities shall be given in this order, we want language in there like-
I just thought it was worthy of a discussion, and I thought, I just, it just crossed my mind that, about that, I'm not advocating strongly, but-
If that's the case, I just wanted to bring back proposed language a little quicker and-
I'm curious what the applicants feel, and then what the other council people feel. Maybe, Neil, do you want to weigh in on this list of five good things? I mean, can they all be accomplished?
Mike, they can be. They can be. And so if you want to put that in there, we will hear you out, but I'm also telling you that we are going to do all five of them.
Is it possible to give them a 10-year deadline on them? Something like that? Five-year deadline on something? Even though they say they're doing them all, you know what I mean? Is there any kind of ability or council interested to say, hey, at five years, we'd like at least this? You know, is there any idea on that?
If, if you're going to go that direction, Mayor, I would encourage it to be based on a duration after the final, after the last CO.
Certificate of occupancy?
Correct.
For both PIDs?
Ideally, yeah. If you're going to, if there's going to be a time limit associated with it. But like I said, the PID money is going to be spent, and it may very well exceed, or not, not even be sufficient to cover all these, but we're still going to cover them.
Okay, Jeremy?
Oh, I was just about to say, if you're going to have a timeline, you should base it off the bond issuance, because that's at the time they get the money, and then you'd have, you know, period. But again, they're going to want to spend the money. I mean, typically, what's going to happen is they're going to have a whole bunch of improvements, they're going to be going along, making these improvements, they're going to issue bonds, they're going to try to reimburse themselves as quickly as they can for improvements they have and improvements they're making. As they're going through that, these are going to be things that they're expending money on, that they're going to want reimbursement for as well. So, I mean, we could say five years after bond issuance, but I think probably what we just wanted, something, and they, they're required as part of this to do a report to show after they issue bonds, to make sure that that money is being spent on these things, so.
Otherwise, it's just the entire term, that they could get it done anytime within that entire term of the PID, right?
Yeah. But again, I think, you know, they're going to have to come back at some point and say, we actually did this, here's our money, here's where we spent it, here's how much we issued in bonds, here's the money going to these different improvements. But we could, we could, I mean, five years, I think.
Yeah, the longer, the quicker you do it, the cheaper it is, if they're not going to wait to do any of this.
Yeah, the only, the only issue would be some of these, and, you know, they can talk to this, but some of these are not probably PID reimbursable.
Correct.
You know, like a public art program is certainly not PID reimbursable. So that is money that the developers are going to have to show they're basically paying, even though they're getting reimbursed out of PID funds. So it, it may be reasonable to sit in three years of issuance of, of the bonds for the PID, or finally, to the bonds, they have to show that they expended the money for one of these improvements. Because again, some of this money is not coming directly from the PID. I can tell you, I mean, you can't spend PID money on public art programs, you probably can't spend it on Wi-Fi access, the perimeter enhancement, you probably can't use PID money because they're not going to be public improvements. Probably, probably none of these actually can actually utilize PID money, so the developers are going to have to use their own money and then get reimbursed the PID money. Does that make sense? Sorry, that was-
Yeah, so I guess we're just wondering, how does this, how does this just programmed in the agreement then? Just clear.
Yeah, I think we can probably maybe add some language above in their reports, because they had submit reports every year saying, in the reports, every year after the bond, they had to show that they're spending, you know, for every dollar they spend in PID money, that this money is going to it, or they set it aside, or they bonded for these improvements, something else to make sure that we're, they're setting aside-
So it does say the district shall include the following enhanced park recreation and transportation improvements. So, so it is saying they will do all five of these things.
Yeah, the district, but technically, this can't come out of bond money or money that's being paid to the PID. Again, you can, PIDs can only, only utilize money for public improvements.
Yeah, right.
Stuff that's actually being dedicated to a public entity.
Well, isn't a public art a public improvement?
They have, we have the other list of what they're spending it on, the grading.
I guess it depends on who owns-
Right, this is just a 5%.
So, I mean, if they had public art that was donated to the city, yes. If they had like a plaza where they had art that was, a plaza that was owned by the HOA and those, that art was owned and maintained by the HOA, no.
No.
But if it's maintained by the district, yes. Right, it's being turned over to the district, just as if it was being turned over to the city.
Yeah, it had to be owned and maintained by the district. So if it was owned and maintained by the district, maybe, but again, typically, the district isn't going to own anything long-term. You could, but typically, the district doesn't want to actually-
Or a transit center could be, would be-
It could, it could be-
Become publicly owned by Hebrew City or High Valley Transit.
Yep, that's dedicated to another public entity, that's fine. I, I mean, normally, these are roads, water, sewer, other public improvements that are being dedicated to public entity. And some of these, like our art district, that's a public entity, but say in Jordan L Ridge where they were going to do a ice ribbon, that would have been a private amenity, that would have actually been funded by the developer to the same extent. Then the developer would have used that and just said, okay, we put in, put in, you know, a million-dollar ice ribbon, but we put that in, meaning now we can get a million dollars of extra PID money coming back to us, because now we have a million dollars more in the pot to reimburse for other public improvements. So the developer is kind of just what pot of money it's coming out of? If that makes sense. And maybe they're planning to have some of this owned by the PID. My, my bet is it's going to be way easier to have stuff, not have a plaza that's owned by the HOA and have two pieces of art in that plaza that are owned by, owned and maintained by the PID. It's going to be way easier to just have that all owned and maintained by the HOA.
Well, the HOA's, though, is not going to own the plaza.
Yeah, whoever, whoever owns the plaza, you know, whatever private entity, or if you have other roads. So anyway, we can, we can maybe tweak that language during the break real quick and we resolve it.
You were trying to come up with that.
Put your heads together.
Yeah, come up with that language for us, if, if you could, please, on what you think's reasonable, what you think's reasonable. Mr. Goldman, thank you. If you don't mind, everybody, we'll pause, right? We'll take a five or seven-minute break, and then we'll come back for the regular meeting, please. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, everyone.
This conference is no longer being recorded.
Right, that we just sadly went to.
Ten, ten thirty tops.
Yeah.
Okay?
Any other comments, questions, motion on the two items in the consent?
Make a motion.
Thank you.
Remove that we adopt the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Thank you Sid. Okay, you three are voting. Go ahead Sid.
Yes.
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 Okay, that passes three to zero with one excused and one absent. I'm getting a message, just so you know, everyone from Aaron. And for whatever reason, man, that phone is, okay, he was saying that he would be joining us shortly. All right, and that will be great. Right, everyone, let's keep going. It's now time for the public comments. Anyone's well online or in the chamber to come forward. We have up to twenty minutes now, so that means we would go to six fifty potentially. And you're welcome to come forward, state your name, and have three minutes to say whatever you would like to the city council. It's open now for public comment. If you want to say something online, just come off mute or raise your hand, and Trina will tell me. Okay, anybody raising hands, Trina? Okay, one last chance before it's going, going, gone. Anyone in the chamber? Anyone online? Would you like to raise your hand or come off mute for a public comment? Okay, I'm not seeing anyone, Trina. Okay, everyone, we'll close the public comment period. Thank you. Now we're going to our general business items, and the first one on, on tap is the monthly development report with Jamie, Planning Manager. Thank you, Jamie.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We've got ten minutes. We'll try to keep this short. So just looking at where we're at in terms of applications this year, we're seeing twenty. It's a little bit less than last year. I've added a new thing where you can see in process. We have about forty-four applications that we're currently working on that are land use based. I've taken out signs and some of the other smaller applications. So we are seeing, that's just kind of where we're at and where we are the past couple of years. Some of those new ones are, we see, we're seeing a final plat request for Red Ledges. It's a single lot there. Just wanting to record this one lot for an individual, but then we will see a future phase coming in just next that with some additional lots. This is kind of on the north end of Red Ledges there. Jordan L. Ridge has requested or submitted for the extension of Valley Hills Boulevard through the edge of their project into, from Fitzgerald Road heading north, and then it bumps into some private property. So they're looking to just extend that road all the way to the edge of the boundary. And this is just a road dedication plat only that we're reviewing. And that's, you can see on the screen, Valley Hills and Fitzgerald Road right there.
Will they, they'll be able to build on that extension, right, once it's approved? Okay.
Yeah, as long as they meet all of the fire requirements in terms of having, you know, secondary access over units or dead ends and all those, yes.
Okay. Uh, wait, one more thing, Jamie, on that one. They're not getting close enough to the London Springs Park area, right?
No, that's, you can see the red star. That's basically following the Wasatch Canal, the lower canal. The London Springs is down here along closure of Highway forty.
Oh, that's right. That's right. For some reason, I was thinking it was further north. Nope. So that's great. We, that means they will have full frontage along that area, except they've got to put the road in further down, right?
Correct, yeah. There's just transitions into other, other developments or private properties, and that'll have to be pulled through with other developments.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Uh, Stuff at Storage has requested just a concept review for expanding their storage in the back for some RV and outdoor storage. We are just, we barely received this one. We're going to be reviewing it. Your code talks about, in the C two, talks about internal air-conditioned storage. This is, uh, it's a non-conforming development, and so we'll probably have some further conversations with the council coming forward if they decide to pursue something of this nature, just given the, where our code sits. So if the outdoor storage is not currently a permitted use, and so we're going to review this, it's just, we normally would with a concept, and we'll provide that same feedback to them. And if they choose to come forward, we'll see something from you before you to kind of have that conversation.
It's exciting to see those live work units finally going in down there. I hope there's a demand for them.
Um, let's see, Sawmill Phase Nine has just come in. This is the apartments that are just to the north of the school. Just west of Sawmill Boulevard, but north of the school parcel between Sawmill and, I think they're going to be calling it Medical Way, where that ring road will be built for, with IHC on IHC's property. This is the one that we have an agreement with for discounted rent for our police officers, as long as they take their patrol cars home, which I believe it's policy that our patrol officers take, all of them take their patrol cars home. So that's an opportunity for affordable housing, or at least some housing relief for some of our police officers.
Just quick pause. Matt, remember how we asked Cherie to help our officers get pre-qualified for mortgages or help them understand these opportunities are coming? I mean, I know Tony did a great brochure, but are we able to keep reminding them, you know, as this moves along, so they're ready for these kinds of opportunities?
Yeah, I think Tony and Cherie do a good job of keeping the information public and out there. They'll send an email, I think, every quarter, updating everyone.
Good. Very glad to hear that. Great.
And our department's done presentations to any staff willing to come in the past. We're happy to do that again as we get updated information.
Nice. Uh, do we know if our employees are taking advantage of it then?
I know, at least in parks, we have one employee who is currently in the building process with self-help.
Nice.
And I've been in a lot of conversation with him, uh, in regards to that process and what that looks like.
I have a question. Um, so when you're talking about the police department, is this also including all first responders? Or is it just for the city, or has this extension, or has this, um, been made to, um, other individuals, like within the county as well? So for instance, your dispatch department and so forth.
I will double-check the code language or the agreement language on there. I believe it's, it's really just for patrol officers, those who actually have a patrol vehicle. And I believe part of that was the developer felt that having those, the presence of those at that time would just help with, uh, kind of security, community, uh...
This was well before we ever got to the point, Yvonne, of including, you know, East City, School District.
I'll find out if that extends to the, to the Sheriff's Department, but I think...
It was. It's for PD, Sheriff, or Highway Patrol.
Okay, sorry, thank you.
And then just some honorable mentions. Uh, we have a plat amendment for Watson Farms. We, TJ North is just, uh, acquiring more land from the other family member just to, adjacent to his property, so it's just an amendment of a one-lot subdivision. Red Ledges, four Cs, just another plat amendment, and Red Ledges consolidating some and adjusting boundaries. And then we received a small subdivision request for the Deer Creek High School, so that the seminary could be on its own parcel, that they can sell that parcel to the church. So, and then I wanted to briefly, um, show you one thing real quick, if I can, and that is, let me find her. I just wanted to show you, this is one of the dashboards that we department have that helps us understand where we're at with the process. And we're hoping to incorporate more of this into this, uh, these reports to you, but you can get a sense, the forty-eight active, again, I took out some of the, um, zoning certifications and site sign permits. But most of ours, most of our requests are from preliminary and final subdivisions, and then it's, uh, plat amendments and site plans. So you can kind of get an idea of where that, those, uh, majority of our, our stuff is coming in. There's a fair amount of annexations. Those are smaller annexations, but they're still in the process. So you can see kind of where we're at. And then the other thing with this dashboard is, we're looking at, right now, we have sixty-three permits under, currently in the review process. The staff's look, we can look at where they are in the process. Majority of them have been respond, or have had our comments, and we're waiting for a response from the applicant. We have, so that's about fourteen. We have ten of them that are waiting for review. You can see that some of them are waiting to come to council, or, uh, we are also leave fees due. We're waiting on four applications to pay their fees before we start. So this is just some really interesting information to kind of see that we watch to try to say, how are we doing, where are we at with, with some of those? And then every one of them is essentially referenced on a map, and so you can see where most of that development or where these applications are coming. So we have a fair, fair bit from all over the city. Red Ledges, North Village, uh, Sawmill, Central Heber, so.
That's amazing dashboard.
Yeah, it's great for developers to see where they're at.
Yeah, and this is, this is one of our dashboards, and they can see some of these things on their end. Uh, we're, I think we'll look at, explore how we also pull some of this information to share more with council and others as we continue to, to work on the program and, uh, work on, uh, kind of how we communicate with the public. Which also brings, Eric, go ahead, Mayor.
Oh, no, go ahead, finish.
It also brings me to my last thing, and that was, this year, the planning department is doing what we call planners in the park. We recognize that we're in the office from seven-thirty to six. Most of the public are not available at that time. And we really wanted to do something this year that would help us have more, uh, interaction with the public. And so we've committed to every second and third Thursday of the month, as part of Heber Market on Main, we're going to have a booth where we can just have the public come and talk to us. We're not trying to, uh, in the past, when we've, when we've been in the park, we've been having people ask questions or get feedback on certain plans or, or processes. This is just, we're there, ask us your questions if it's about a, if it's about a shed, or a fence, or setback, or anything it is. We're just trying to make ourselves available for the public. That way they feel like, hey, we can, we, we know who you are now, and we can communicate with you. And so we really wanted to go to where they are and at a time that they have more free time, and so just take advantage of that. So we're going to do that again in the second and third Thursdays during the Heber Market on Main through June, July, and August. So it'll probably be mostly me and Jacob, Jacob and I, and we will see you out there for the duration of the, the night. And we're hoping to do some fun things yet. We're still trying to, to iron out those details, but this is something we hope to, to find successful and, and develop, further develop our relationship with the public.
Sounds great. Perfect. You're just going to have to have Chief there with you.
I think he has, I think he has some officers in the park, and so, yeah. But that is the end of my report. If you have any questions for me, I'm happy to, to address them.
Oh, just really nice. Just make sure to, that Trina can post that.
Yep, I've sent it to Trina already.
Oh, very good, very good. Any other questions? Okay, Jamie, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
We're going now to our chief, Chief Sever, on our public safety report.
I'll try to be way quicker than Russ. Real quick, just want to give you a little bit of an update on the PD for this last month. Um, just to give you, you know, an update, we sent out, so far, the Power Engage, we sent out eighteen, eighteen-hundred-and-seventy-six surveys to citizens who have had random contacts with our police department. That'd be forty-five-point-five-two percent return rate, which is really good on surveys. And, um, we have a ninety-four-point-nine-two percent five-star rating. So that's really outstanding. Our officers are doing a fabulous job, and it got a lot of positive comments. And once a week, every Monday, um, they actually get a report from Power Engage with all the comments the citizens are, are saying to them. And anybody that has a negative experience receives a text message or something from me, um, just requesting follow-up information and how we could do better next time, so.
You notice, Chief, with that forty-five percent response rate, that's probably the victims, and then the perpetrators are not responding? Is that what you're thinking?
So it's, it does, it's not perfect, so it, it goes to whoever calls, because that's the number that they have that they pulled out of the computer-aided dispatching system. Yeah, and there are certain calls that we, we do not send surveys to, um, because they're more sensitive in nature, like we would never send one to a homicide or, or something like that. And then they also go out the next day, and they go out during normal hours, not in the middle of the night. You don't get a text message from the police department waking you up, so. It's, it's pretty squared away, though, but it's, uh, it's worked out really well, and, uh, the officers like seeing all of the positive comments back as well. Um, last month, we had our, our animal control officers respond to a hundred-and-forty animal problems throughout the county, so that's quite a few. They, we did a hundred-and-twenty-two area checks. We had four DUIs, a hundred-and-sixty-three citizen assists, twenty-three, twenty-seven juvenile problems. It'll be interesting to see how those fluctuate as we get into the summer months with more free, and, uh, free, like they're in jail. And then we had, uh, six domestics, um, four death investigations we responded to, and we were saw death investigations, we respond to any death that, uh, is not attended. So, um, if somebody passed away, it can be unnatural causes, but we still have to look into it if it's not an intended death, meaning there's not, it's not at a facility or a doctor, the doctor there. And then we had ten fraud cases and eleven noise complaints. Um, right now, our, uh, our Travis is in Code Enforcement, is pretty busy with, uh, his weed debate, so he told me he is on the thistles. So just a reminder, if you are listening, check your yard for thistles. I sprayed all mine and in my neighbor's yard, because I just don't want them to move over. If you missed it last month, we had our, our annual Easter egg hunt, and it was a huge success. Um, we had, I would say, thousands of people there. We put out twelve thousand eggs. We had a pancake breakfast, and we had an Easter bunny dressed as a police officer, which I thought was really cool, so. But everybody seemed to have a really good time. We got a lot of positive comments from it. And almost a lot of it was, well, the entire thing was done through donations from the community. So I think we, we recovered, we probably got about eight or nine thousand dollars in donations from the community to put that on, so. Right now, we, Officer Berg is in motor school last week and this week, so he should graduate on Friday. It is a tough school. Um, he had a pretty serious crash yesterday. I laughed because he's okay, but, um, they, uh, they showed, they, they all crash. And, and only about half the people that go to motor school actually pass. It's a very strenuous school. So he's, he's got a little road rash and some bruising from yesterday, but he passed his high-speed driving today, so he's, he's doing really well, and we're hoping that he'll be a, uh, a full-fledged motor officer this Friday, and are, the one we did last year, uh, Officer Newby, is doing a fabulous job. And he actually, um, is one of the instructors now at the school, and, uh, which is a, a feather in his cap, because usually it's, it's eight or nine years before you're an instructor. And, and that's something that he wanted to do, and he went and passed the instruct class and, and did an outstanding job. And so he's actually instructing a little bit at the, uh, at the academy with Officer Berg as well. And then we have, uh, we are going to pick up our command post this Thursday. So, and Officer Rick Keel is going with us to get it, because, uh, in a prior life, Officer Rick Keel was a diesel mechanic. So he thought, just in case, we're going to have somebody there that can help us. So it might look weird going through the airport with all the tools. We're not sure how that's going to function yet, but we'll see what goes, so.
Big RV that you showed us?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that's in California?
It's in California, so it's...
You were driving it back?
Yeah, yeah, a couple of us were going, and, uh, we're going to drive it back and, uh, hopefully make it, or else Matt's going to kill me. We had it all checked out by a third party. It was in really good shape and stuff, so. Well, I already got, uh, a commitment from the county that, um, they would take a semi and, and transport us if something happens. So that was awful, really nice of them, so. Um, yet, uh, that's pretty much our report. If you have any, any questions?
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank your officers for all they do for us. All right, Matt, I'm going to probably turn this over to you now on the third agenda item on Unity Week events and council assignments. Is that right?
Yes, Mayor, thank you so much.
Okay.
Council, I intend to take just one or two minutes to review your Unity Week assignments, to make sure you're aware of them and have any questions you may have answered. Uh, Unity Week, as you know, begins, uh, Monday, June seventh. It's just about two weeks away. Your first assignment is on Wednesday of that week, June fourth, at six o'clock at the Main City Park. We hope that you will join us to help hand out ice cream and greet residents and visitors. What we'll have that night is some music. We'll have, uh, ice painters, and just try to make it a warm, fun, family evening. And, and preview, of course, of the main event, which is Thursday night. Thursday night is the kickoff of the Heber Market of Maine twenty-seventh season. Uh, we're going to, uh, break the ribbon-cutting down into two essentially separate time periods. The first will be at six o'clock. Why? Because we have a break between the opening act and the main act of about twenty minutes. So ribbon-cutting will take place during that break. We'll come back at intermission of the main act, which is at seven-thirty, and do swag handout. So we want you there for both, the ribbon-cutting and the swag handout, and that again is Thursday, June fifth, at the park. Your third assignment is for Saturday, June seventh, from nine to noon at the Tabernacle Building for the flower planting. I am pleased to report that the volunteers we had here on Saturday were able to literally knock out all of the work that we had. And it's, all the islands are prepared for the flower planting on June seventh. I saw you there.
I just made sure you guys were all done.
How'd we do?
Very good.
Excellent. Thank you, thank you.
Record time, did it.
Very nice, great job.
Now, I also want to place on your calendars, uh, your assignments for the Red, White, and Blue Festival. Uh, the Red, White, Blue Festival, of course, is on Friday, July fourth. You are sponsoring the free lunch, and hope that you'll be there from eleven-forty-five to one o'clock. That's just one hour. Be there a little bit early to set up and get ready to go. The fire department's going to be cooking the food, and hopefully they will be there to help serve that food, okay? Also want to encourage you to consider participating in the patriotic walk, that, which will begin that morning, eight-forty-five at the park. I understand we'll have George Washington and Thomas Jefferson Adams and Abigail Adams.
Where are you going to be?
I can tell you. You got to come. You got to come.
You're a Roosevelt.
Go for George.
It's a lot of fun, and this year, we've got a parade that will come in behind the patriotic walk.
Everybody needs to come.
Absolutely, absolutely. So lastly, I do want to, um, ask that you keep your fingers crossed. We are hoping earnestly that the main stage will get its CO before that week. If not, we will, we will kick or push the ribbon-cutting one week. But right now, we are planning for the fifth of June, hoping we'll get the CO. If not, we'll move the concert into the Rotary Bashel like we have in the previous years and come back the following week to do the formal ribbon-cutting. So keep your fingers crossed. I was out there today.
Should we start saying things like, you know, it's not until next year, and then maybe it will actually be on the time?
Under promise, over deliver?
Yeah, I don't know, you know, kind of.
How are you handing bricks out to the crews out there?
Throw? I, I can do that. I can do that.
If you notice, Jamie, Jamie has a little bit more gray hair because of it, so Jamie's been...
No, he doesn't. This is gray hair.
Lots on your shoulders, Jamie. We're counting on you.
Get mean, Jamie, get mean. What else to say?
We don't want to have a public clogging.
It really does look a lot better. It really does look a lot better.
On the Fourth of July.
For my benefit, I won't be here on the fifth, so if they move it one week, I, I would like that.
Say it, say it. Then it'll happen on the fourth, or the second. I'm just saying, they've got to do the roof, finish some paving, and then what else?
Roof, it should be done. That won't be the delay. That was going on today. The issue is, they got, I think, two concrete pores left and paving.
It's not easy. The, the pen, it's just not laying yet. Well, no, it's cutting out, because we have gradients and angles that it takes time.
I guess I'm asking, and I'm going to be the meanie here.
Please.
So is there, has there been any kind of, um, you know, wheat fee or?
Liquidity damages are being assessed every day.
Okay, okay. Wow.
Yep, and we've had the Jesus moments. We read in the Rite Act. We've done all of that.
Russ is that, that person that does it. Russ is really good.
Come on, Russ.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, great, great. All of this is so much better than, um, last month, so this is exciting. All right, let's go now to, uh, quite a discussion on the Envision Central Heber Policy Priorities Initiatives Update. Matt, you, you've given us a lot to chew on here. Go ahead and dive on in.
Can you meet me the presenter, Jamie? Beer thing, just for one moment.
And again, since Aaron, I, I'm sorry, I just checked my texts better. Aaron's not going to join us for another, for another half an hour, and Scott's gone. And even though we're discussing a lot here, we really need them to be in the room when this perhaps comes back to the city council, and maybe you want to put it on the agenda again next time, Matt?
All right, thank you. There is, we're going to tag team this. We have a lot of presenters. The purpose of this agenda item is to update you on the progress, so with your top policy priority, which is, of course, the Indigenous Central Heber. So let me take you through this, and of course, if you have any questions, please let us know. Let's talk, let's remind you for a moment about the vision. Some of, some of the people attending today or online may not be aware. But we did a comprehensive, um, visioning process and called, uh, Vision Central Heber. And in there, we tried to re-envision what the downtown could look like with some strategic visioning and investment. This picture here is, uh, from a drone that's sitting over the park, looking due north. You can see one hundred west on the left and Highway forty on the right. And, and the idea is, what if, what if perhaps we could redevelop the downtown so it became a legitimate nation with maybe a pedestrian avenue that's mid-block? You can see that there halfway between, again, One West and Highway forty. What if we had mixed use that afforded some, uh, commercial on the pedestrian alley and some, of course, some residential in the downtown to further support the businesses? And so this is really what Envision Central Heber was about, is trying to create a downtown that was, that was vibrant, that was exciting, that contained a nightlife, and was a destination, not just for visitors, but of course for locals, which is so important to this. The envision was about connecting destinations, and we talked about using that pedestrian alley to connect the park with the Tabernacle Square, for example. It was about, uh, providing increased living and working opportunities in the street, uh, supporting shopping, dining, gathering, entertainment. The Envision Central Heber was about enlightening the streets in the Main Street areas that provide interest and comfort and add amenities. And so that's what the vision was about, and what we're going to do now is jump to our partnership with the Community Alliance for Main Street. Uh, Rachel Kaler is the Executive Director of Main Street. Uh, we have begun the process of negotiating an agreement between the city and CAMHS for them to take, if you will, uh, the lead on programming the park. Now, this is proving difficult, because our plan is that we'll make investments in the park that will make this self-sufficient financially. And so we're having to set this agreement up in phases, that when we hit certain benchmarks, we'll be able to, of course, hopefully fund this without having to subsidize, hopefully, none of the costs as we try to program this park two-hundred-and-fifty days a year. And so I'm going to turn the time over to Rachel, who's going to talk to you about some of the, um, in, uh, initiatives and investments that they're making in the downtown area. I'll control this. You'll tell me the events.
Thank you. Uh, so one of the things that we really focused on was creating programming at the main bandshell. We've made a lot of investments in that, and we just wanted to see more people downtown. So we, what we have started is our Soulful Sundays, which is a nine o'clock yoga. It's free to the public to attend. And then later that afternoon, from six to seven, we're calling it community music, where we are inviting local musicians to come and play softer music, guitars, flutes, and we're actually kicking it off with a harp ensemble that's from Wasatch County. On Sundays. Um, it's, I'm still working out all the details of those particular entertainers, uh, but I have a lot of interest with Heather Thaxton is reaching out to her group with the, um, community orchestra. Piano, I have quite a few homeschool groups that are interested in bringing their groups to come and perform. So we're just trying to create this feeling of peace on Sundays. There'll be no market, there's no food truck, there will be no craft vendor. It truly is about just creating an atmosphere of peace at the park. That's on Sundays, so we're calling that Soulful Sunday. Monday, however, we're creating a Monday night local show. And we started out with six weeks. I was able to fill those six weeks in three days. Uh, reached out to Winston Lee, and he jumped on two of them. We have the Schoolhouse of Rock that will be performing two different nights on Monday. Uh, Stacey De Spain, and then Craig Jamison does an open mic, so he's calling out to audiences and doing one song at a time, and that's two nights in July. Uh, with permission from Matt, yesterday, we opened up six more weeks, and today I have filled all but two. So I really feel like there is a, there's been pent-up demand for local music. What was interesting is when I put it out just this morning that we had a couple more weeks, I received four emails from local bands that I had not heard of. And yet, when I emailed them back, a couple said, we can't do it for free. We have a nominal, uh, offering that we're giving to them of fifty dollars if they'll come and perform, which, if you know what we're paying for our Thursday night vendors, uh, it's much less. But I explained that as CAMHS, we're really running this. We're a not-for-profit. We don't have the funds to pay them, but it's a great stage opportunity. Uh, but one of the things that really excited me today was I reached out to... But one of the things that really excited me today was I reached out to Jeff McLean, who his father is doing threads at the Ideal Theater and reached out to Jeff. He's got a group of students that are vocal students. And he immediately emailed me back and said, sign us up. We're in. So I am so excited that this Monday night truly is for the locals. In fact, I got Tony to bring his band as well. So they'll be performing and I just, it's, it's really exciting just to see the excitement. We also have a few food trucks. Don't want to overwhelm the park with food trucks because we're not trying to create Thursday night again. We're really trying to keep this small and intimate, inviting the locals to come and listen. One of the things that I, in recent days, have been talking to somebody about etiquette in listening to music. And Thursday night really is, the music is the background. There's a lot of things going on. There's the beer garden. There's games. But teaching our community to come to the park to listen. And I think Monday night's the perfect opportunity for us to change what's happening and have people come to listen to the music and not have it be background. Like if you're going to a restaurant and there's background music, we want them to come to listen. So I'm going to try it. I think it's worthy, having that conversation with the audience because I would think most of them are coming because they know who's on the stage. But I'm so excited for the main stage. I really feel like it's the platform that will give a lot of these maybe band members their first chance. Like we've got the students from Lee Music with the Schoolhouse of Rock, Jeff McLean's vocal students. And then we've got a few more veterans like Craig Jamison and Riff Raft, Stacy De Spain, and then Alicia Stockman Stockton. If you know her, she actually just recorded her first album and she's agreed to come and perform on the stage at no cost. So I just, I'm so excited for what this, this idea has really come onto its own and just, I feel like the community's really going to embrace it. So we're very excited for that. Matt's got on the, on the TV, on the screen, a couple of goals that we have. One of them was beautification. So CAMHS really took the forefront last year in offering businesses an opportunity to participate with putting more flowers on Main Street. Currently, we had the hanging baskets and we had some bulb outs. But what we were asking businesses on Main Street was to invest in planters. So we've got large planters. We partnered with Country Gardens last year and we had 15 businesses participate. This year, we've able, we've been able to get those 15 back with some, some dropping off and some new ones coming on. Conversation that I had with Mark Rounds over the winter was a concern that the hanging baskets were aging and were difficult to maintain. There's a cost when they're up high with the water. Country Gardens was actually under contract to come and make sure those hanging baskets were watered and they often had to go back several times because they were evaporating the water. So we made a decision that maybe it was time to retire the hanging baskets due to a lot going on on those poles. We've got banners now year-round. The hanging baskets were hitting into those banners and causing a bit of a rub. And so we've made the decision to move to planters sidewalks out on the curb where the water is and removing the hanging baskets from those poles. So we wanted to make you aware of that. They're still there. I met with Parks and, or Parks this morning. Well, we walked up and down Main Street, looked at water lines and I'm working with Shiona to do a plan to make sure that the planters are hooked up to the water line so that these plants are being maintained in a, in a better way. But we're very excited to also partner with Wasatch High School's Floriculture Class. So with the 15 plants, planters that we have, we've partnered with Cody Clyde and he'll be bringing out 30 or 40 of his students this Thursday and Friday, who will do the first planting. And then the next 17 new planters will be planted by Country Gardens. So it's really exciting to use them. They're a little more affordable, the Country Gardens. And this has all been communicated to Michelle. She was excited to see Cody getting, there's the kids an opportunity to get their hands dirty. My daughter's actually one of those students. And while they've grown things in the greenhouse, they've never actually planted. So I think it's a great opportunity for them. So win-win, we're going to have just over 32 or 33 different planters on Main Street. And the color variation is yellow and purple flowers with greenery as well. So we're excited to see that happening and you're welcome to join us on June 7th or cheer the kids on this Thursday and Friday. They'll be starting at 11 o'clock this Thursday. So Mike, you should see, hear some rumblings outside your office on Thursday.
Miners are sitting out there, ready.
Perfect. Thank you. So we'll move on to the mural, which is happening this Friday. So this is a mural that we've worked with. Her name is Cheyenne Renee. She has a project called 50 in 50. She's doing 50 murals in 50 states. She reached out to Utah Tourism Office and they redirected her to Heber City. They felt like we were starting to do these murals, we're a community up and coming. And I will give credit to Armando at Granny's who reached out to me just a few days after I got the email from Cheyenne saying, hey, what's the next mural? And at the time, we didn't have funding. I actually received a TAP tax grant to pay for the mural and Cheyenne is very affordable. And so this is really exciting because not only are we eating the mural, but she does a documentary that will include all 50 of the murals in all 50 states. So it's, it's a bigger story than just one artist coming and putting this mural on. But you'll see she really captured some of the things that we love here in the Heber Valley. Timpanogus, boating. It's really an early summer morning and, which is perfect for grannies. You'll notice in the summertime, they get a lot of tourists and visitors that have been to the lake and then come back. And we couldn't be more excited. We're grateful for Melanie North, who is the building owner, who has agreed to come under contract for a dollar a year for us to put the mural on her building.
Where's the building?
So next to Granny's, it's the bedroom building. And so really, most of the pictures that you'll see taken are from the granny's side. But Armando was thrilled because it gives a great background for the people that are coming and enjoying burgers and fries at his establishment. Yeah.
I have to disagree. This is a summer evening. The setting over 10.
That's true. That's, well, yeah, yeah. You're right. You're right. Summer evening, but it's really been fun just to work with Cheyenne. She's actually never been to Heber. And so this is something, the imagery that you see is something she came up with. There was novens. And that was part of the, the fee is we could tell her what to paint and it would be more expensive. Or for a lesser price, we would give her the creative freedom to do something that she felt inspired to do. And I feel like she's nailed it. So Friday morning she starts. I also want to give credit to Timber Ridge. Timber Ridge remodel is actually providing the scaffolding for us. And so Justin Moss and Paul Clark will be helping to put that up on Friday so that she can create. This wall is a 20-foot-high wall, just one little female, and she's going to be out there for five days over the weekend, putting this mural on our Main Street.
And you can't beat the price.
Right.
Were you giving her any accommodations?
Yes, she's staying at a place that I have.
Good.
Yeah.
For free.
Yeah.
Oh, good for you.
Yeah, we're putting her up. So summer programming, we talked, and I just wanted to give a lineup. Again, we've added six more dates, but this was the initial that we were able to reserve in three days. It's just really exciting to see these bands jumping on and having an opportunity to have front stage. So if you go to the next one.
Really quick. So with, with Hebrew Market on Main, the Red, White, Blue Festival, the two car shows, and what Rachel's put together, we'll have nearly 40 events programmed for that park this summer.
Incredible.
Yeah, it's really exciting. So a couple of ideas that I just wanted to throw to the council, still nothing in stone. But one of the things that we talked with Steve Anderson, the owner of the Ideal, is the possibility of ghost tours. Now, this could be something that we could create around the historic tour. We're actually going to be installing those historic plaques in the next two weeks. And they do look great. Yeah, you were able to see them at the graduation last week at Hebrew Leadership Academy. We're hoping to launch the historic tour on June 7th with the ribbon cutting and an hour-long kind of media tour, inviting people to come and experience it with the Hebrew Leadership students there at their locations. But we wanted to see if there's an opportunity to kind of bring that back and creating maybe a ghost tour, getting some of the stories and maybe not so scary, but more historic. And so this is something that Steve Anderson has been thinking about, but I told him about the walking tour and he thought it could be a great partnership.
So is there really anything that's considered haunted in Heber?
So the reason why we started it was the theater.
Back there.
Yeah, there's a, there's a story of the theater. It's interesting. There's a Facebook community called You Know You're From Heber When. And last fall, people were asking about ghost stories and several people had stories of shadows and bells and things. So I thought that was interesting. But so that's an idea of, again, getting people to see those historic properties. Ghost tours have been very popular. I was in St. Augustine, Florida a couple of weeks ago and we were able to participate in a ghost tour. Again, not so scary, but really historic in nature.
I've been, I've been on one in Virginia City, Montana. And then we stayed in a hotel that was.
Part of the tour.
Deemed, yes, that was deemed haunted. I will say this, I will say this. I have always been a skeptic when it comes to any kind of ghost stories until I saw the dark image standing at the end of my bed. And I thought it was my husband and then I looked over and he was sound asleep. So I guess maybe.
Why you're gray.
Whatever. That's why. Thank you. Thank you. No, this is my kids. That's why.
Another idea that the CAMHS board was throwing around that I am excited about is the opportunity of a Christmas outside market on 200 South. And I'm excited to announce that Clayton Vance has agreed to give us some conceptual drawings of what this could be. And we are working with a group out of the Midwest to give us some lighting designs for Second South. So again, this is all pie in the sky, 30,000 foot, but we did want to share because I do think these are really good momentum-moving ideas.
So I have a Christmas tree around 30 feet. You can have it for free as long as you come and cut it out of my front yard. Yeah. Oh, yeah. I will.
I'll talk to Matt Kennard about that. And then just the steps towards historic preservation. I just wanted to give you an update. I know I was here last November and just wanted to tell you where we are. So our Heber Historic, we have 35 properties on the tour, which we are thrilled about. We also have two plaques that we've produced. One is for the Hickon Home that Lane Lithgow is redeveloping. And the other is for the John Crook Cabin that Alice Hickon is working with the school district to rebuild on the school district property. So once those two properties are ready, we'll include plaques on their properties as well. And then, of course, the four monument signs that you have been working with the Historic Preservation Commission, they will be also part of the Heber Historic Tour. And I'm working with Preservation Utah, who has been very thorough in making sure that all of the properties are accurate. Their origin is accurate and location is accurate, so much so that they did note that the Heber Valley Railroad is not in its original location, which we know that, but they were very adamant when I gave them the information that they actually, they want the plaque to go where the original look was. Right. Right. So it's been, it's been great to work with them and I appreciate their expertise. So we'll continue to work with them, but it does give us an opportunity to put Heber City on a much larger stage. They have, I would say, a dozen or more historic walking tours as part of their app and their website. So it'd be great to be affiliated with that group.
Rachel, when do you think the walking tour or the signage will be done?
So walking tour, we're going to do the ribbon cutting on June 7th. We are doing the installation starting Tuesday and Wednesday of next week. And then hoping to have, bring the whole Hebrew Leadership Academy together from 10 to 11 on June 7th for the actual ribbon cutting and launch of the tour. The website and the app will be at a later date just because Preservation Utah is really running that program. So I'm at their mercy and they've got three different historians that are reviewing and accounting for the information that we've provided for them. So June 7th from 10 a.m. to 11.
It's the same time as your flower planting. It's purposely done at the same time to get people downtown.
Yeah, because we want people to come downtown. We have, I would say, 15 or more of these historic properties are on Main Street, which is really exciting.
You said the installation of the signage is when?
Tuesday and Wednesday. So Brandon, myself, and a couple of Hebrew Leadership Academy members will be helping Public Works install those at the properties.
If you could have somebody or if you could send me where those locations are.
Sure.
Then I'm happy to put them in the newsletter and tell people, go out and see our new signage, right?
Yeah. With that, I actually forwarded a map.
Yeah, I was going to say that. You showed that to me.
Yes. I, so I forwarded a map to Matt that was completed today. We'd like to produce 1,000 of them. Hebrew Leadership Academy did, we spent all the money that was allocated through the production of the plaque, the poles, and then we, we powder coated the poles, which I had not accounted for. So we might need a little money from the city to produce the maps. I really want to have some printed just for people that maybe aren't online and because we have a slight delay on the app, it'd be great to have those paper ready for the June 7th. So Matt, if you've got discretionary funds, we could use it. So and then just a reminder and a thank you for, for funding or putting in your 2526 fund for the reconnaissance level survey at a full amount of 40,000. We are hopeful that the CLG grant will come back and be funded. But again, it's currently unknown based on federal government grants on hold. So once we have that budget confirmed July 1st, I hope to work with Tony to hire a professional historian to then move the reconnaissance level survey forward. That should take six to nine months. And of course, the area that we're studying is 500 North to 600 South, 600 West to 600 East. The hope is, once we complete that study, that that historian will help us submit for a national historic district, which if approved, those homeowners in that area, if they choose to, could receive a 30% tax credit for residential or a 40% tax credit for commercial if they meet the criteria. And I will tell you, I have had several homeowners, not just the ones that are on the historic tour, but others that have heard stories on local media and a couple of magazine articles that have reached out asking when this is going to be ready. They have projects now that they would to apply for grants or they would appreciate that tax abatement so that they can put that funding towards re-roofing, water heaters, sidewalks that are cracking. There really is a desire from people that are living in these historic homes to move this forward. It's small right now, but I think as word gets out, as our historic tour starts, as the reconnaissance level survey happens, you're going to see more homeowners that are interested in preservation of their homes and financial tools to make that happen. So again, thank you for funding that survey and I look forward to the results. It could take up to a year, so with anything, we always have to be patient. But I would, I have been working with the Heber City Historic Preservation Commission and have recommended to them to perhaps review a historic overlay zone to bring to the city council in 2026. And we'd like to work with what you have for the chose, but create an overlay that then gives some power back to the homeowners in making sure that the charm and character of their neighborhoods, even with new development and redevelopment, is still a clear path for preservation. So one building that we are always concerned with, and that's the St. Lawrence Mission. I had an opportunity to meet with them last week with Ron Carlyle and Christie Bond. And toward that building, I will tell you, they're not interested in selling at this point. They do have quite a fundraising effort in front of them before they can build their new building on 1200 South. But they are very much in favor of working with the city on a first brighter refusal with the city. And again, they're years away, but they are open to preservation and want to make sure that the historic element of that building is. If you have a chance to go in, there's a lot of wood, original wood doors, of course, the stained glass that is just beautiful. It's worth preserving. So. And I want to acknowledge Lonnie Reed is here. He's one of the property owners. As we move to the next slide, we're going to talk about Block 103. So this was a project that was actually brought to city council in 2010 by property owner Che Dickman. She did an original plan with Paul Burke to redo the parking lot. And in 2010, city council didn't have any financial tools to help them. So we are now here in 2025, there is a grant called the Rural Community Opportunity Grant. And working with Dallin Kosher with our Economic Development Office, we could apply for this grant up to $600,000 for the redevelopment of the parking lot. There is a 30% match request, which is why we're coming to you today as you're talking about your budget for '25 and '26. I want to say some positives about this project. Bonnie Reed did the reconcept based on some of the property owners' desires. And eight of eight property owners are interested in this redevelopment project. All eight of them. All eight of them are interested in putting a little bit of money towards making sure that it's done right. Three of the property owners are interested in doing their own redevelopment on their property while we're doing this redo of the parking lot.
Okay, so Rachel, this picture is different than the one that was in our agenda materials. Are we using this picture as the latest?
Yes. So the one you're looking at is from 2010. That's why I wanted to give it context. This is a redesign for now, based on property owners' desires.
Great, great. So this is stated.
It is. Yes, thank you for noting that.
Well, I, I kind of liked the other design just because there was more green space on the backside of those buildings. And now it's more just parking and walking area, it looks like, instead of trees and that.
Yeah, keep in mind, it's conceptual. And Lonnie had maybe a couple of hours to put this together. So the, the plan that you saw in 2010 was more pedestrian, walkable. And I don't know how long that engineer had to do this. But Lonnie really did this as a favor to me so that we could discuss some of the options that the building owners are looking at. Some of them want to extend their building. Some of them want to put commercial on the backside. Some want to put residential on the second floor. This absolutely meets the central Heber plan for downtown. And by redeveloping the parking lot, we could create up to 88 parking stalls in this area. If you have a chance to go stand in that parking lot, Dallin Kosher and I did it two weeks ago with Steve Anderson. It was nonstop traffic, and I would attribute it to the dance studio and a very popular restaurant called Melvin's that is in this parking. And there isn't enough parking for the demand that's happening. Just by paving right now, there's a lot of potholes, gravel. It's, the parking lot really is in disrepair. But by working with the Rural Communities Opportunity Grant, we could provide a great base for these property owners to really increase the feasibility and the walkability of their block. So I wanted to give that to you as a idea. Also, perhaps we may be coming to you with a request to meet either in kind with some work that Public Works could do for storm drain, possibly some infrastructure improvements such as varying the power lines, and just any in kinds that Public Works could help. We also could require some funding assistance to meet the match requirement as part of the grant requirements. So Matt, did I miss anything?
Could I just say that this is an opportunity to extend the C Street to the north? And I'm just kind of wondering if there's more of an option of, you know, the walkability, as Rachel was saying, just to think about everyone. It seemed to be a natural fit for what we're going to be talking about next, right, Matt?
Mm-hmm. Probably is, yeah. Some design tree in there, plus keep the parking, so.
Yeah, exactly.
All right, we're going to keep moving on. Got a bit more to show you. So next, we're going to jump into the downtown, don't go far. I think you have a couple more coming up, the downtown transformation. The first is downtown parking. I'm going to do this slide. I think, Tony, you have the one following. So as you're aware, the city has purchased the Heber Light and Power Administration Building. They're the owners of it. We have a lease back agreement with the power company to use that. And then their new administration building is completed on 600 West. As you know, we are working with Wasatch County to purchase the old fire station. I have learned today that it is empty. As you know, they've had the ribbon cutting. And I've reached out to Dustin Grayball to see if we could put it under lease immediately for additional parking in the downtown this summer. And he said he would get back to me and we would continue to talk about that. So there is an opportunity this summer, potentially stripe it and get more parking almost immediately in the downtown.
Now, this map shows the potential for shared public parking. I know we've started conversations with different property owners about park, shared parking, leases. I, I think, Rachel, you've had some of these conversations, haven't you?
Yeah, so it's been great to actually meet with these property owners and talk your greatest challenges. And inevitably, parking becomes one of their greatest challenges. Sycamore Building has been a great redesign. I had an opportunity to talk with Brett Robinson, the owner. And he said, you know, it's interesting, we have quite a few parking stalls here on site, and we have yet to have an event that causes parking. But my neighbors were very concerned that when we came in, that we wouldn't have enough parking based on it being an event center. And yet, you look around, it's an evening event mostly, maybe on Saturdays. You've got Zion's Bank that's closed, that has open parking across the street. You've got an opportunity there as well. But it really needs to be private partner agreements. And so we want to work with the city and these property owners to create these agreements, whether it's a management agreement, maintenance agreement, accessibility. But I would tell you, their number one concern is liability. And they want to make sure that if they are coming under some kind of agreement, that they are covered and in partnership with the city. But really, it's a parking perception problem instead of a true parking problem when it comes to commercial and parking in our downtown.
Just interrupt really quick. Jeremy, I'm sure you've been working with Matt on liability issues. Has that been explained to the business owners, or what, what's the plan there?
We, we, each, each deal will be a little bit different based upon the needs of the business owner. For example, Brian Keenan, who's close to the park, has different expectations than maybe someone else does. And so we've offered things such as snow removal, such as sweeping after events that we may have. And so we have to negotiate an actual agreement. When we do, however, we'll make sure that Jeremy's involved and that he addresses those issues. But the main point here is where you are proactively identifying property owners that might be willing to enter into shared parking agreements with the city for the purpose of expanding the existing parking inventory, public parking inventory.
And you've obviously got the list, right? You obviously know who they are. What's your timeline?
We, we've actually put, what'd we say? This summer, we want to make sure we get, that we get with each property owner to make sure we understand, one, if they are A, willing to enter into a joint parking agreement, and B, what are their terms? And then after we got that, we'll start going back to the drawing board to figure out how we approach them with agreements.
And I will tell you that Block 103 really came out of these discussions. So I've started these discussions last fall and unknowingly walked into a discussion. And that's when the property owner said, I actually tried to do this with the city in 2010, and here's my plan. And that's what's really led to this Block 103 redesign. It's been interesting to talk to property owners that were there in 2010, as well as new property owners. And that's what I guess I wanted to bring to the council is the excitement of these property owners, that they recognize the need, they see the opportunity with the grant, they're willing to participate, and they see an opportunity for themselves to redevelop. Something, two of them were already planning to do, but now having the grant and working in conjunction with all other eight property owners, it really becomes a win-win for all of them.
So what, just, just so everybody knows, at the regional planning meeting this morning, I don't know if you attended, Mike, I was online, we were not able to get some grants that we've applied for. So I don't know how competitive this grant is. I hope it wouldn't be as competitive since it's new. But it would be a really exciting thing, right, if we can get it?
It would be, indeed. All right, next, we're going to jump into C Street. I'll turn the time over to Tony.
Hey, C Street. So this, wow, that's kind of square, that's funny, but those blocks are supposed to be square. This represents the current thinking of the location for C Street. Fresh off the press this morning, moving the intersection to Main Street. And also some little changes here. So going through the parking lot, through, I think, Atwell's property, to get it out of the parking lot. So that's kind of the initial thinking. If you want to go to the next slide.
And Tony, I was wondering, is there any possibility to go on the west side of Atwell, right close to the church there, just so people aren't walking behind cars?
Absolutely, that's, that's a possibility. Certainly adds some expense, as you would be needing to lay some asphalt down through the church's little landscape plaza there.
We, we can do the crossing. That's not a problem, because it's our road. But it would take it a little further away from the intersection, which might be nicer, too, for the public to be able to cross.
The other facet I want to emphasize for just a moment is the red line as it approaches the city park on the right-hand side. Working with the two property owners, Tanya Olson and Brian Keenan, they're interested in extending the city and easement for a sidewalk that would take it from 200 South Festival Street essentially up to the Wave Building. I've spoken to the Wave. They're also interested in pulling that sidewalk through to their general parking area. And so you'll see some more about this in the near future as we try to get that sidewalk in place. For Tanya, it allows her to put a barrier in there for the stormwater that's generated off that parking lot. For Brian, it prevents the stormwater in his parking lot to go onto Tanya Olson, so it's a win-win for everyone.
So some of the initial improvements that we were thinking out is, would be paint, pavement marking, and names. We'd have both, we have a TV go out there? Okay. So we'd have street name signs, pedestrian crossing signs, two wayfinding maps, shared path sign, and, and then some just general wayfinding signs that don't have maps on them. So there's some significant cost in the signs. The paint potentially could be fairly affordable, but those are the initial improvements that we're thinking about. The next steps, we've got to obtain parking and walkway easements. We've started conversations. The conversation will, could parallel or be part of the easement, parking easement discussion on, on that block. We've got to finalize the design and talk to some engineer, make sure that we are meeting standards, going through parking lots, and that we're doing, that our signs meet standards and that they're safe. Obtain quotes from, and then install the improvements.
Next, I want to update you on the 100 West improvements. Russ?
You want to go to the next one? So just a reminder, with the envisioned downtown, our envisioned central Heber vision, the road that had planned for 100 West isn't really consistent with the direction we were going. And so there's a concept of moving forward with a design or improvements on 100 West that would make it more of a pedestrian-friendly, walkable type road. Also allow for lots of angled parking for businesses that may run along that road or other activities. So you can see some of the concepts here in these slides. Again, this is a concept for now. This is, this is not the design, this is just ideas. But some things like bulb outs at crossings or intersections to kind of shorten the distances that people have to cross those intersections, make it safer crossing, mid-block crossings. We want bulb outs for landscaping, those type of events that will make it more pedestrian-friendly. And also the desire to have a trail, at least on the, on one side of the corridor. So those are some of the preliminary things that we were talking about doing. As you know, we've entered into a preliminary design contract with Horrocks Engineering. Wanted to give you an update of where we are at on that. Right now, we have met with all of the dry utility companies, got their input. It's, it's really kind of a challenge to figure out how to set this up for future businesses and future development while also maintaining service and, and accesses and things like that to all the existing homes and things that are in that area. So we've met with the utilities, we've got their input. We have all of the existing conditions out there on 100 West surveyed. Right-of-way mapping is complete, so we've got the right-of-way finalized and ready, marked out. Not marked out, but we've got all the information on the right-of-way. This week, they're going to be flying drones for some high-resolution imagery. And they have a draft utility layout done. So they're, they're getting some of the preliminary work done. They're starting a draft road layout. One of the things I want to talk about is public input phase. There's going to really be kind of two phases of public input. There's going to be an initial phase. That is where they are going to put together a initial concept design based on the input that we've given them so far. They're going to come meet with staff, present that, gather more input. And then we're hoping in June that we will come to the council to present that information, get some more input from you. Once we've done that, incorporated your input, we'll go out and get some input from the public on that concept design, get their feedback, and then really kind of finalize that, that concept preliminary design. And then we'll move into a final design phase where there'll be more public outreach, specifically meeting with homeowners, people who are impacted by the project specifically. So, excuse me, that's where we are currently. I don't know if there's any questions.
When you say you're going to go to the public, right, to finalize the design, the design as well as then, with the final design, are you going to be notifying all the people that are impacted along 100 West, or what do you think?
So I think that they want to get some input from you guys on what you'd like to see. I think what we're anticipating is that we will put out a, a comment or a, or a concept design that they can comment on. We want to give them something they can comment on. But we will push it out through social media or potentially another meeting, if that's what the council wants to do, where we can collect input. We're open to other ideas as well. The most, the majority of the public input is expected to be in the final design phase where we're meeting with impacted individuals specifically and talking about what's happening across their front edge and those kind of things. But overall, public comment, that's what we want to get in the preliminary phase.
Can I ask one more question, please? In those designs, if, if somebody could scroll back, I'm seeing that we're not giving driveway access on most of those driveways for, you know, single-family homes.
We will. All of the existing homes will have to maintain access.
Well, that's going to, in certain fact, the number of striping.
It will.
Right?
Absolutely.
And so this is preliminary, it's not showing driveway access, but the plan is to give driveway access where the driveways are.
Correct.
But is it, depending on a certain size, can they get a double driveway if they're used to that for whatever reason, or just a single driveway? I mean, that's another thing to think about.
Yeah, we're going to have to work through all of those details. We're not going to want to widen those any more than the existing driveway accesses are. People do use the right-of-way as their own property, which is challenging for us. We want to reclaim that right-of-way and put angled parking on the street as much as we can. But we recognize that we've got to accommodate existing homes and existing businesses, make sure that they're kept whole for now, but also retain the ability to, to make that so it wants to be in the future, so.
Matt and I had this discussion yesterday. Matt, do you want to talk about a little bit what you had mentioned? How with the driveway access, people could easily park on their front yards, turn them into their own private parking lots if the city does not want them to use the 45-degree angle parking? Or in other cities, they've actually even charged for the striped parking that goes in, and I'm not really a fan of that at this point. People will think it's still theirs. And so, you know, there's going to be a lot of push and pull on whether people just have a driveway access and then are expecting to park as much as they can out front. And if the city's going to allow that, so we're basically paving, you know, their use. Or is the city going to say, no, this is really for visitors, it's for economic development, and, you know, you've got to park on your own property? I, I don't know what the city's going to do there, but I know it's coming at us really fast with this kind of proposal.
I, I think those items will be fleshed out through the public process as we get more feedback from the public and as we get more feedback from the design team. Those two issues will have to be married at some point to make sure that we have a project that works for not just the private property owners, but of course, the, the visitors that come downtown.
I understand. I'm just saying, we need to be prepared for it because if we're not, if we're caught flat-footed on that issue, it could really hurt this whole project. And it cannot make the city, it can make the city look really bad if the city doesn't acknowledge that those are real concerns and then try to work through it, you know, upfront. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah, this is going to be a dynamic public process. And as we go through it, we'll address these issues. I'm sure many, many others haven't even thought of it yet.
And Horrocks is good about doing that. They're good about the public outreach, and we can help them with that.
Tony, next, I'm going to update you on zoning.
Hey, we got still quite a punch list downtown. One of the things we need, have been talking about is how do we make sure that we have something in our code that requires C Street to be maintained?
And Tony, be specific on that. It is a code that would require C Street when someone redevelops in that area. So when they redevelop, we would have something there that they So when they redevelop, we would have something there that they would have to honor and respect that pedestrian alley.
Emphasize that, we're not tearing down any buildings.
Yes.
Unless a developer comes in.
In return, they get better design options.
Yes.
We already do have it in the general plan, as you know. It is going to be shown in the upcoming Capitol Facility Plan. I think for trails or streets, I can't remember which Russ said it was going to be in, but it at least will be shown there. You've been shown a C Street brand, I think, what, two or three months ago? And we'd like to bring that back to you for adoption. Roger Brooks recommended that we designate a parking district and adopt a parking fee in lieu. That would be something I wouldn't do immediately. I think that's, you've got to make sure that you are absolutely ready for the on-switch to be turned on for redevelopment when you do that. I don't think we're quite that, frankly. But that is on the to-do list. Adopt a Central Heber Overlay Zone, that's going to be coming to council in June and July. Actually, at the next meeting. Adopt a flexible historic building use ordinance. Planning Commission pushed the pause button on that till we get the Central Heber Overlay Zone done. Russ and I have been looking at angled parking to see where we can get some low-hanging fruits or low-cost angled parking striped. We have a few ideas that we can do. And then one thing that I'd recommend is that we continue to look at financial incentives downtown that incentivize development. We did talk with council about some more draconian ways, but to try to promote this as a locally-owned business area, the use of the downtown brand and the installation of blade signs. So the one thing that we had talked about was remember the prohibition on, what's the term of big name-brand stores?
Franchises?
Yeah, franchises.
Chain stores.
Yeah, chain stores. And council wasn't in support of that, but I would still like to see if there's a way to just provide incentives for locally-owned businesses opposed to putting on the prohibition, so.
I thought, I thought we were in favor.
Yeah, maybe it was wishful thinking. That's what Kerry Smith recommended.
Yeah, I know.
That's, I know at the time when we talked about it as part of the zoning ordinance, probably a year and a half or two ago, council was opposed to it. But then Roger Brooks did his study, and he again recommended to do that. If that's a policy that you would like to revisit, we can certainly come back.
Yeah, I think we should. Yeah, definitely, just because, you know, the chain stores, we already have Trek on, and that's a chain, but it's a different chain.
Yeah, that's the difficulty of it all.
We can define it, you know.
This one, but not that one.
I know, but.
Well, I think the one thing, the discussion was with Roger Brooks as well, was that eliminating maybe chain food stores, you know, franchises, your subways or whatever it might be. I think that was more of the discussion as well. And yes, I think we need to revisit that whole discussion, maybe.
So a big discussion we need to do, if we limit it to local, is figure out how they can afford to go down there. Right now, I don't know if anybody could afford to, you know, rent any space on Main Street right now, just because of the cost. If I had my business, let's say, I think I couldn't just because of the cost of rental. So I don't know, we need to look in funding or somehow be able to facilitate, you know, the mom and pops coming on, if that's the direction we're going.
Hold that thought, hold that thought, we get to it in just a minute.
I just, I just want the council to know that Erin Sheehwood has joined us online.
Excellent.
Okay, go ahead.
Excellent. So I want to recognize as we jump into the main stage in the Festival Street, that Jamie has had his hands full with this project, he's been the project manager. I think I can jump in and show you some pictures to indicate where we are. This first set of pictures is of the main stage, showing you a view from the very front as well as from the side. You can see the pavers going in there on the front, very attractive. It's going to be a high-quality event, sorry, high-quality project. It's interesting, the value here, not only the design, but functionality. The design, of course, is based upon the Daughters of Utah pioneers in terms of the rock, the roof's the same color. The two side buildings uses pioneer motifs, the elongated windows. So very, very befitting of the Heber Valley area. And of course, the functionality, being able to put concerts facing south into the park, or of course, facing north into the Festival Street, and hopefully in the future into the pedestrian alley.
It kind of draws people towards the park from both ways.
Yes, absolutely. So this has taken just a moment to transition here, but the next set of slides really emphasizing the Festival Street. When it comes up here, you're going to see two pictures. One, looking at the paver, there you go, look at the paver work from Highway 40. Again, you can see the concrete bands, you can see the trees there on the south side, the pavers again, which is making the street look very much a festival street. There are no curbs, it's a curbless street, so it's no strip hazards. And you can see there's also a fair amount of landscaping to soften it and making it feel more inviting. This is showing you two areas that will be receiving pavers hopefully this weekend, and that work will continue and hopefully be done before June 1st, our first event at the park. So yeah, wash your fingers and it's a lunch writing on, that's exactly right. And so this next picture is interesting. This, remember here, we had the railing, we had the elevation change in there. This is how we're handling it, is with steps. You'll see pavers on the left-hand side, you'll see a new sidewalk going there on the right-hand side. It's a wider sidewalk, based on your request, Yvonne, it's a 10-foot sidewalk, I believe. And so again, an improvement to the park. All right, so council, this last one requires your feedback. As you know, we attempted to get a CRA, you know, local agreements approved with Wasatch County. In the Wasatch County School District, we were unsuccessful. I was instructed to go back and take a look at the existing boundaries of the agency. That which is in yellow and covered by the hatched area is the existing boundary, agency's boundaries. What I need your feedback on tonight is a smaller boundary, which is the hatched area, which sits over obviously the existing boundary. Essentially goes from 150 West to 150 East. Goes from essentially 500 North to about almost, not quite the hub intersection, not quite. It goes a little bit further on the east side because we're trying to capture the views of some of those new developments. So it heads a little bit further south on the east, but on the west, it follows the existing boundary area for the agency. We are crunching lots of numbers, and I don't want to get too far down the road without understanding, council, what your vision is in terms of the second agency's boundaries. Let me emphasize what I mean by second agency's boundaries. You see there in yellow will stay in effect. You already have two interlocal agreements for those boundaries, Heber City and the Wasatch, sorry, the Central Utah Water Conservancy Project. What we're talking about is potentially a smaller boundary when we approach the county and maybe the school district a second time. So what I've been needing your feedback on is this, what you were envisioning, is it something different? And if so, what that might have been?
To me, it's getting those numbers, seeing what's possible there. Land valuations have dramatically increased since we did the original CRA study. So who knows what the numbers will be and what would be available in an increment.
So you want to finish the number crunching and bring that back and take a look at it?
I think we need to look at the numbers before we make decisions. What does anybody else think?
I agree too, but this is definitely heading in the right direction of something that people can understand and why, rather than just everything.
Okay.
I think this is going to much, get much better support from the county.
This is from, tell me the addresses, because I'm not.
It's 150 East to 150 West, 100 North.
Okay, to 600.
Almost, not quite, not quite. Actually, I'm sorry, not 600, it's.
Natural Foods Grocery.
Yes. Yeah. No, correct. Yep. Council, thank you. I think that's the feedback I need. We're going to finish crunching and hopefully have something back to you in early June.
Hey, Matt, is there, is there a reason that you didn't want to include the space with Smith's and kind of the New Smith's building and kind of that undeveloped area up there?
It's included in the original boundary for the agency. This one, we're not proposing it, we're looking at more of the core of the downtown based upon feedback we got from the district and the county. But if you feel differently, we're all ears if you want to adjust this.
I just want to see the numbers, I think Mayor's right. Let's see the number where it is and see if, you know, we want to incorporate the New Smith's, because that is a big generator.
But understand, we won't net anything from that because this new boundary will be adopted after that valuation hit the county's books.
Matt, is there any way you can update the original CRA, the first CRA study? Because I'm sure those numbers have changed, I'm sure they're much different. Could you do that at the same time? And then Jeremy, is there any law where one CRA can transfer money into another? I don't know.
I don't know either.
Okay, just checking. Just look into it.
Council, that completes our update of what staff is doing to bring about your number-one policy priority, which is Vision Central Heber. Any comments, any questions at this time?
That was a lot.
It was.
And so when you come back in June, how are you going to bite this elephant into pieces?
Back in June, I'm going to focus on what you see on the screen, which is potential new boundary for a second agency boundary.
Well, and Tony's given us the schedule with the zoning, and that's, that's going to take a lot. That's going to take more than the rest of this year, right? It's going to take several years of work. And then the 100 West thing, that's a whole other thing. I'm just saying, everything's proceeding on its own timeline, it looks like.
That's fair.
And is there any way to maybe give us an overall timeline to see if we can try to stick to it at all?
We could. We do have a lot of different pair paths, each on their own timeline. We could come back and present that at the same time. We update you on the numbers for this, if you like.
The reason I ask that is because the same staff is doing a lot of this same work. You see what I mean? And for staff to be able to look at a timeline that's realistic and say, I can't do it all at once. I've got to be able to do this first and then that second and the third, you see what I mean?
Process mapping.
I hope it can help you as a staff be realistic with your time.
It certainly could. I know that departments are working on various facets of this, almost in their own little area. There's a lot of interchange. We are meeting as a staff in what we affectionately call our skunkworks. It's the same thing that Lockheed Martin used to do, and they used to design their most fastest up-to-speed aircraft. We are meeting to discuss, what's our next steps? What do we do with the Heber Light and Power Building? What do we do with the county building when we purchase it? And so we're trying to put the best minds together to figure out the best plan moving forward.
Not pickle works, huh?
Skunkworks.
Anything else anyone wants to say on this?
Mayor, I just want to say, and I think everyone agrees, kudos to our city manager and our city staff. We are really moving forward. I know it seems slow sometimes, amazing things are happening. I think we should, I'm just so pleased with the Festival Street and our.
It's going to be beautiful.
And so it's just, it's amazing. And what's happening at the cemetery and just so many good things. So thank you, thank you.
When those good times rolled, thankfully, we put the money away to be able to afford these things.
Absolutely.
Really wonderful.
Thank you, Mayor, council.
Okay, everyone, we're moving on to our action items now, and we want to welcome Kurt Hoffman to come forward. He is the Director of the Wasatch County Children's Justice Center. We're going to turn the time over to you for your annual support request for the CJC.
Thank you, Mayor. So I don't have any written paper, I'd like to have a great excuse, but in, after being on the job for two and a half years, I went to Costa Rica for a week with my wife, and work went off on the shelf. And so, yeah, I got her on the plane, that was half paddle. I mean, there's claw marks at the sand, but we got, we're back. And I appreciate the time to, to talk to you about the CJC. All of you are familiar with the Children's Justice Center. Many of you were supporters. I found a poster the other day of the, well, our original building was straight across from Beto's. That was on Main Street, we leased from the school district. But our current building, that was built in 2002, we had a really nice engineer donate almost $7,000 worth of engineering and house plans to the CJC. And so if anybody says Mike Johnson doesn't have a heart, I got the paper that shows that he does. And he has always been generous in supporting us, and that's how we kind of got started. It was mom and pops, it was community donations. And now we're into the phase of, we're not little anymore. And, and which comes with some perks. We're, last year, we interviewed 178 kiddos at the CJC. Seventy percent, 70% of those were Heber City residents. It sounds bad, right? You're like, dang it, like, I mean, nobody even wants to have a CJC because they don't want to, there shouldn't be any child abuse. But it sounds bad, but we look at it on the positive side, that more kids are being brought to the right place to have the right conversation, rather than more conversations in a principal's office or in a, you know, police department. It's a, it's a comfortable place for kids to talk. And so it said 178 interviews, 70% of them being Heber City residents. Primarily are age groups between 11 and 17. And we, of those cases, 52% of them were allegations of physical abuse, 33% being allegations of sexual abuse. The rest of them are kind of a blend of neglect, you know, sexual exploitation has been an up-and-comer. But those are primarily the cases we see. The, Heber City's always donated to the Children's Justice Center from, from day one, and been a great champion. The money that the city's donated since I've been here is we've used to support the forensic interviewing program. So initially, as we started, we had trained all of law enforcement and all of CPS, and they were the people that came in and did forensic interviews. And so we could have 15, 20 different people that did interviews, so that no one was really the expert, right? There was lots of people that had a little bit of experience, but nobody is the expert. We've, we partnered with Summit County to hire a forensic interviewer. So she works 20 hours in Summit County, she works 20 hours for us. With the donations from Heber City and Midway City, the state gave us matching money so that we could stretch our dollar further and we could share with Summit County so we could get it at the best value possible. Having that forensic interviewer doesn't mean we don't need law enforcement or CPS to do interviews, we still do. But that specialist can then help enhance those people that do the interviews' abilities and skills through peer review and, and, and working, because she, 20 hours a week, she can't do all the interviews, but she can work with Sergeant Keel and his team to, to make that happen. So that's, that's what we've been using the Heber City donation for since I've been to the center. The benefits that Heber City gets from that is they get all the training and support provided by the Attorney General's Office. We just got back from a trip to, training, a symposium at Snowbird for two days where we took four Heber City officers up so they can get, there's a lot of local case studies around the state, and they can, there's 550 other law enforcement CPS workers from the state that they can learn and grow from. And then every January, we'd go to San Diego to the National Perspective, and we typically take two or three Heber City officers to that. So the training and support is, is huge, but the cost benefit to Heber City is also, it's a coordinated response. So we meet once a month with CPS and law enforcement, saves detectives time going and duplicating services. They can partner, we can have a meeting with CPS and the school and mental health and the prosecution. We can all get on the same page and get the information, saves the detectives lots of time for running around and looking for those answers. Last year, we had, of those 178 cases, we had 52 prosecutions, and we only had two dismissals. So, so the 52 cases accepted for prosecution, there was only two cases that had to be dismissed. And, and I'll let Sergeant Keel talk a little bit about the importance of that, of the interview process and why, why that matters and why there is such a low rate of dismissal. But ultimately, the, the ask of the CJC is for $11,000. That would be 70% of the salary of the forensic interviewer, the forensic interview specialist. Wasatch County pays the benefits for the forensic interviewer, which is $16,000. But that would be our ask, but I wanted Sergeant Keel to take a minute to explain the benefits of having that forensic interviewer and the forensic interview process. And also for, your officers are phenomenal, their professionalism's off the chart. Sergeant Keel doesn't need to be here tonight, he's, but that's the kind of guy he is. It's nine o'clock. It's nine o'clock at the CJC, we're still talking to people, and it's not like, oh, sorry, I'm off, I was off at six. They're above and beyond, and their professionalism is, is off the charts.
So, I was here last year, well, speaking with you guys, but I figured the opportunities come around if you only, pardon me, only hear something once a year. Sometimes it tends to slip a little bit from importance and that kind of thing. So I'm just here speaking in behalf of support of Kurt, the CJC, McKenzie, the forensic interviewer, and all of their staff that work with him as well. As law enforcement, we have our piece of the pie, so to speak, when it comes to cases involving children, victims, juveniles, and that kind of thing. However, our, the scope of our investigation is pretty narrow compared to not only the services that these guys offer, whether it be medical services, resources for therapy. They can even offer assistance with finding rooms and housing and that kind of thing. Their services offered to these kids and their families afterwards are just astronomical, and in some cases, life-changing for these individuals. And speaking specifically to their forensic interviewer that they use, McKenzie Gardner, just to put it plain, she's one of the best that I've seen when I do child interviews and those kinds of things. I've been through the forensic interviewer training. My, my other detectives have as well. However, due to it being just a smaller portion of all of the other cases that we deal with, and everything that we do on a day-to-day basis, it's not our specialty, so to speak. Kurt and McKenzie and Julie over at the CJC, that's all they do, is help kids through hard times. It truly is what they specialize in, and they do a phenomenal job. The importance behind that is, with these child victims, most of the cases that they're involved in are, they're very sensitive, and there are things that they just don't want to speak to strangers about. It's very difficult to make a kid, whether it be an eight-year-old up to a 17-year-old, comfortable enough to speak with a stranger about these things that have happened to them. These guys do a fantastic job of that. Not only do they ensure that the children are comfortable and safe, and can speak about the things that have happened with them, they do so in a manner that we know that that is an interview that we are not going to have to try to redo, we're not going to have to go back to again. With these types of interviews, we try to just take one swing at it and just have it done with. Every time we have to bring this back up with these children and stuff, it's a traumatic event for every time they have to live it. So we really try to keep it down to just one time, get everything out, and have it done, and have that interview done in a manner to where we can package it up, provide it to prosecution, and have it be so solid that most of the time, these cases aren't even going to a full court process. The majority of the time, we are getting guilty pleas long before we would ever have to put a child on the stand. And it's due to the work that Kurt, Julie, and McKenzie do over at the CJC. So from an investigative standpoint for us, it's simply invaluable. We know a professional is going to sit down, get the interview done, we get a copy of it, we can go through, dissect everything, put in our report for our charging documents and everything else, and they just do a really fantastic job at it. That's why I'm here, is to support them with that.
It's amazing. Absolutely amazing. I'm just always blown away when you come in every year, and it breaks my heart to see what you are experiencing and what those kids are experiencing, you know, throughout the year. But it's phenomenal work that you're doing this. I can't thank you enough. Thank you, thank you. All of us thank you for what you do there for our community. Are there any other questions? I hope you don't mind, this is an action item. I'd like to open it up for public comment, but did you want to say something first, even?
Oh, I just want to say thank you for all you do. I'm, I can't imagine having to deal with this on a professional level. And when we say professional, I'm sorry, but I don't understand how there can be any way that you can keep your emotions out of it. It would be something that I just applaud you. I don't know what else to say. It can't be easy. I'm sure that these are things that you look at your own children, and in your mind, you're thinking, I'm so grateful that I have my children in a safe, safe place. But these are, these are the stories that, you know, keep other parents awake at night and hoping that it never happens to their own child. So thank you so much for all that you do.
The last 14, 15 years of Kurt and I's professional relationship and working together, that's one common theme that we've always came back to, is that nobody should ever harm a child.
No.
And we do all that we can to not only prevent that, to provide education to keep that from happening, but also hold them accountable to do.
Thank you.
All right. I'd like to open it up for public comment. Is there anyone that would like to come forward for three minutes and give 10 minutes max of public comment on this $11,000 request from, from the city to the Children's Justice Center? You're welcome to come forward, or you're welcome to raise your hand or come off mute Trina, are you seeing any? Okay, I'm not either. All right.
Come off mute for a second.
Then she went back on. Oh, did anybody want to raise a hand or come off mute online? Thank you for showing that, Trina. That's very helpful. I appreciate, okay.
I'm ready to make a motion if not.
If I may, if you include it in your fiscal year '25 budget, you'll have to add it as a budget amendment, which will be coming forward in June. Or you could put it in your fiscal year '26 budget, will come effective July 1st. It's up to you how you want to handle that.
Kurt, what fits into your timeline?
We work on a calendar year, so we're, so either, it's, it's not
Doesn't matter. So we could do it in July and August, that you could receive that.
Comedian for the city.
So that would come out of your administrative fund?
No, you have $40,000 in your discretionary fund for donations.
Discretionary fund, okay. You ready, Aaron?
Yep.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the ask tonight, and we make it come out of the 2026 budget so that we can flow that in effective in July, out of that fund that was just described.
Thank you, thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second, Mayor.
Thank you, Sid. Any further discussion? All right, let's start with you, Sid.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Thank you. That passes four to zero with one excuse. Thank you again. We look forward to seeing you next year. We hope your numbers drop dramatically, but in any case, we know you're ready. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right. We're going now to our next agenda item, which is the Resolution 2025-07 Harvest Village Public Infrastructure District, or a PID, number one and number two. Tony, I'm going to turn this back to you. Jeremy, were you able to also, if you're ready to present any language, that's great. Tony, is there anything you want to wrap this up with?
I, no, I'll defer to Jeremy on what we, what he's talked about.
Is there anything you'd like to?
So, so we talked during the break, or down the hall, and we think the best solution would, the developers agreed, you guys correct me if I'm wrong, but that they would, that we'd have a short separate agreement, we weren't able to draft it, but just a short separate agreement saying that the developer would be required to guarantee installation of these improvements within a year of the COO of their hotel. So that way, we have a backstop to say the developers, you know, the PID's on the hook too to do this, but since these are probably, some of these are going to be developer-funded improvements, so the developer would also be on the hook within a year of COO of their hotel, which I felt was a good compromise. And I think if we include that language, I'm pretty comfortable. We didn't really talk about the, or I guess we didn't really reach a resolution on On the voting. On the election.
Yeah, I understand.
I don't know if you guys have any others?
That timeline is similar to where we, where we landed on, on the funding for the fee and lieu, if there were any, on the affordable housing, I think, too, right? That had something to do with the hotel occupancy.
Yep, exactly. And again, they, they want to tie it to that, because that's where their money's coming from.
And that is the word that I couldn't, I was going to ask you to repeat. So it's within a year of hotel occupancy that which of the amenities, and Tony or Matt, if one of you
All of them.
All of the amenities?
All five percent would have to have been spent by that period.
Wow.
And
That's a great backstop.
And just to, just so the council is clear on this, so there's, there's two types of bonds that they're likely going to issue. One is a tax bond. So that would be a ta, like similar to Jordan L. Ridge, the bond would be against the property that's up to their five mils. They also have assessment area bonds, which are paid off prior to them transferring the property. These, that's kind of a little bit of a different funding mechanism, where the developers pay that upfront. It's not a, a property tax over, paid over 20 or 25 years by property owners. So they, they're only paying the 5% on the tax portion of their bond, which, you know, we, we felt was reasonable, because they're paying the other portion. It's, it's more just a financing mechanism, so.
Okay, so the language is in a separate agreement. You don't want to add it into this governing document?
Well, the governing documents with, really just controlling the PID. So we want a separate agreement at the developer to, to commit the developer as well, so that it's not, the developer can't just say, that wasn't our obligation, that was the PID's obligation.
So is it possible, and I, I don't know, I'm just asking, is it possible to make the motion to include a separate agreement with that language, and then it would be brought back for the next consent agenda? Is that something feasible?
I think, I think the council trusts me to draft that. It's pretty simple, that I think we could just make the motion contingent on an agreement that I draft that Matt is comfortable with, and I don't think we'd need to bring it back. It's pretty simple.
Okay, so we're approving it beforehand, but you're going to send us out that agreement?
Sure. I'm happy to circulate it to the council, but again, I think that's pretty simple, just saying that they're backstopping it a year of, they'd be required to guarantee that those improvements will be put in within a year of their certificate of occupancy. If there's any, and of course, that's, it's really unlikely they'd issue bonds after that point. I mean, it's possible, extremely unlikely, so I think we'll capture all those. If by chance they issued a bond after that, then they'd have to also come up with that money. That's pretty unlikely, I think.
Here's some language I'm trying to write down, Mike. I noticed you were writing it down too, but I'm just trying to help whoever makes the motion. The motion would be to approve the Resolution 2025-07 Harvest Village PID, number one and number two, contingent upon signing another city agreement forthcoming to guarantee that the list of the five public amenities will be completed
By the developer.
By the developer.
A year of
One year.
Certificate of occupancy of the hotel.
Of the CEO for the hotel. Okay, I'm happy to repeat that, but does anybody else want to proceed?
I've got it.
Okay, you've got it. Okay, is there, yeah, go ahead, Aaron.
And I'm sorry, I missed part of this earlier. If you talked about it, just say that we're good. One of our concerns was, you know, what is, how is the development going to help us to communicate to the new homeowners, the, the impact on their taxes? So that when we get the questions, we can point to something. And I know that there, there's some recording and stuff, but I think we challenged last time to say, you know, help us to come up with some way to, to be communicating this, to have something to point back to, to say, this is why, this is what this is, when we inevitably get those questions about why are, why are these so high? I know we've gotten a couple of those emails recently from other developments, and it's, I think it would be helpful for staff to have something to point back to. But I would, you know, I, I think it's worth at this point thinking about, what does that look like for when a new lot goes for sale, or a new home goes for sale? What do we want them to show? Is it a one pager with, this is how a PID works, this is what we're doing, this is why, here you're going to see this section on your taxes, this is what it means, contact us, talk to us, here's your contact? I think now's the time to get that agreed to, if there's something. I know that might be abnormal, but I can see that this being, I could see it being a problem with communication.
What's, what's included in the title report?
So there, there, it will be in the title report, and all the further, Jeremy, as well. It is in state law and state statute, notification and notices, posted notices, within the sales center, for example. It has to be there, so.
Yeah, so, so state law requires a notice, and it will specifically say, for every $1,000, you'll pay an additional, you know, whatever, five mil, it'd be NARS, yeah, $5 per thousand, if that's, you know, what the, the mill levy is. So that's recorded. Jordan L. Ridge also agreed to put it in their CCNRs and on their plat. Honestly, that's nice belt suspenders, but I'm willing to bet, I, I bought houses before, I, you know, most people that buy a house, even if they're buying into a city where their CCNRs don't read 80 or 90-page CCNRs, maybe some people do, but not
Sign that they do.
Yeah. And then, and then on the plat, most people are not looking at the plat. However, when you get a title report, the title report's going to list all the exceptions. So if you have a recorded exception, the title company should point that out to you and say, these are all the things, you know, all the exceptions on your title, they're on a new construction loan, there are new, first-time home loan, and there's not going to be a lot of exceptions on the title report. So, you know, that should probably stick out to property owners. Jordan L. Ridge is not required to under the PID, but they do provide that on the initial home sale, the first time the home is sold, because they control the title agents when they're doing that. They provide a sheet as part of that, that's, you know, like a separate colored sheet that says kind of the same thing. Again, it's really hard to enforce that on subsequent home sales, because you're not controlling, you know, the title company at that point, and the, so, you know, that's an option, but people really should be seeing this on their title report. Real estate agents should be disclosing it, but
What do you think about the CCNRs? That's an interesting, I mean, people do read those, because they're always afraid of the CCNR violations.
I mean, they may, they read them. I think if you're, if you're a person that's reading the CCNRs before you buy a property or buy into a property, you're probably sophisticated enough to also read your title report and see that that's an exception in your title report and ask about it. But that, that's my take on it. I think it'd be pretty easy to add into the CCNRs on the townhome, so it's probably something we could require, and it's not going to be an issue at all. I think it's a lot less likely that someone would pick that up, as opposed to in their title report, but that's, that's just
If you're, if you're reading their CCNRs, you're probably in trouble for something like a
Yeah.
Fence or something. You have to go back.
People that read them to make sure they don't get in trouble. Come on.
And, and there are, there are some people that will read them to know stuff like, can I have, I mean, particularly in a development like this, can I have short-term rentals? You know, make sure
Exactly.
They know what they're buying into. But again, people that are that sophisticated are probably certainly looking at a title report and picking this up in the title report, would be my assumption after doing this for 20 years, but
Well, also, I suppose unless you're paying cash, anybody that buys one of these units is going to get a financing statement that clearly shows their monthly outflow. It's, that's just standard. They don't even need to read the title report to see that.
Yeah, lenders are going, you know, be keen on this, because they're going
It's part of your qualifying to get the loan.
Yep, exactly. So we can require additional stuff. I think it's kind of overkill. If I was probably the seller, I'd probably do everything I could. They have as much of an interest in making sure people don't come back to them and claim that they didn't know, you know, I bought this, no one told me I was buying into this. I mean, that can result in litigation. And frankly, the title companies probably have the most interest in making sure someone doesn't come back to them.
Yeah. I'd like to have it to be in the CCNRs, and specifically have language about, if you have questions, contact and have a contact for the, for the PID, instead of the taxing authority. I know that won't stop it, but it will at least give them a first stop. And it seems, seems to me that's not asking anything, and it's also incredibly easy to do.
It will prevent them from bothering us, because we can say, go to your CCNRs, right?
Correct.
Do the contact information there.
Yeah, the, the PIDs are also, I mean, they, they're registered through the public notice website, and you have to disclose, just like us, the PIDs have to disclose the board members' names and phone number, so it is out there for people to contact. So it's pretty easy for us to reaffirm and say, here's, you know, look online, here's a place to look to find information on the current board members.
That's good to know. Did not know that. Aaron, anybody else, questions? Okay. If you don't mind, I'd like to open it up for the public comment. We'll see if there are any public comments on Resolution 2025-07 Harvest Village PID numbers one and two, public infrastructure districts. All right, anyone's welcome to come forward in the chamber, you've got your three minutes, or you're welcome online to come off mute or raise your hand and I'll call on you. So let comments open for Resolution 2025-07. Okay, I'm not seeing anyone online, I'm not seeing anyone in the chamber, I will close the public comment, thank you very much. Is there anything else you'd like to say, sir?
No, we appreciate your time and we appreciate your, uh, support of the, of the PID.
Counsel, are there any other questions, comments, or motions?
I'm just making a comment. As always, I will more than likely say no. I don't think this is a project that I can fully support and I appreciate you bringing all of, and I appreciate that you've been willing to work with the council on some of the concerns they might have, but I will be saying no.
Understood.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions, motions?
Aaron, did you want to make a motion or I will?
Uh, just for clarity, would you be amenable to, to including it in the CCNRs? Is that something we could ask?
I don't think that's a problem. Neil, do you agree?
I would completely agree. Aaron, that's perfectly, if you're happy to include it.
Great, thanks.
That'll be the contact information as well as the extra property taxes, some short sentence on that.
Not so worried about the wording such as, if you notice this, this is why. Here's what you, here's the stuff you can look at around you that is paid for, by the way, right? Like that, that else always helps. Because they'll see that frankly, because the hotel's going to go first, if not, you know, toward the beginning, right? Uh, and then, yeah, contact information. In answer to your question, Mike, I didn't write anything down, so I'd rather not make it because I'm going to get it wrong.
I'll make a motion then.
Thank you.
Go for it.
Counsel, I move that we, Resolution, Resolution 2025-07 Harvest Village Public Infrastructure District number one and number two, with a couple added requirements. One, that in your CCNRs, you put notice to all purchasers of the properties that they're subject to this PID and conditions, what, the benefits and the costs to them. Uh, and number two is that contingent upon coming up with an added agreement, um, to city based, uh, discussing that the developer commits to, um, completing the five, um, public infrastructure improvements listed, uh, within one year of obtaining, uh, a certificate of occupancy for the hotel.
Mike, would you amend your motion to add in the contact information for the PID and the CCNRs?
Yes, in the CCNRs, make sure there's contact information with the board.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second, Mayor.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All right, let's start with a vote.
Yes.
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 Motion passes three to one with one excused. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's go on to our next agenda item, which is, uh, over to our chief. In the Animal Services Board, uh, Chief has led the charge, literally, and I'm not kidding you, to research all of the animal ordinances within various cities and to make a recommendation for a single code that the county and the cities could use, especially since we are policing in Midway. So this next agenda item is to repeal outdated ordinances and approve Ordinance 2025-11, which is going to amend Title Six, Chapter Two of Heber City's Animal Control Regulations. Thank you, Chief.
I think, I think we're done.
Now we're done?
Excellent, Mayor, I think you did a fabulous job.
Well, I think you've done a great job.
Yeah, uh, we, we were looking at the ordinances and we noticed that, uh, it was a very diff, ours was, in particular, was very difficult to read. It'd been repealed over the years and it just left the sections in saying repealed. And then there were some good sections and some of the laws were very antiquated, such as if you had a female dog and she escaped your house and she was in heat, the author, officers were authorized to kill the dog, um, which is a bit, a bit bad, it's a bit extreme. If you had a, if your dog got a complaint that he was barking, you had 21 days to remove its vocal cords. So there, there was just some stuff that really, uh, and also are supposed to be auctioning off our animals, which we don't do anymore. So there was just some ordinances that were problematic that we needed to remove. And so, um, the city attorney, Jeremy Cook, looked at it and pulled out all those repeals and we added in, um, also a resolution that the fines will be done by resolution of council. The other problem I saw was that there's a, there, many times in the ordinance, it would state like, you know, the, the fee for a dog is $10. And then if you go to our, our fee schedule, it was $20. And if you went to our animal control shelter, it was $30. So there was three different amounts that the public could find, that's very confusing. So we're in look at, uh, we'll be coming back to council for a fine schedule and stuff as well, that we can kind of, uh, put into its own section so that people can go to one place and look. So, um, I did notice, uh, there was one small error in, um, that we just, just a spelling error. I think it says call in, um, 6.17.010, it says this title, call, be guilty of, I think it should be, shall be guilty of a Class B misdemeanor. So we'll make that, that correction in the codified version, yeah. And with that, we just ask that council, um, approve this ordinance, amending and repealing the various sections as listed in the, um, uh, attachment.
And then Chief, you've given the, um, proposed fee schedule to the other amenities in the animal services and we're not getting maybe a lot of feedback yet. Have you received any?
Um, I just that I, as far as I understand, everybody's in favor of them, so. And we looked at the fees from all the entities and we had some things where we hadn't done any fees for, um, there were some places, there were $600 and it was $55 here, and so we're just trying to kind of even amount throughout the entire county. So everybody's, just makes it clear for our citizens.
Right, and we're going to use the same fee schedule for Midway as well as Heber City. We're also hoping the county council will consider it and approve it, but even though some of the fees might be a lot higher than you've had in the past, uh, we've discussed in the Animal Services Board that the police, the animal control officer will always give at least one warning, if not more.
And sometimes they'll.
Before a fee is assessed.
They'll sometimes be lower as well. On many of the laws, we've, uh, done a graduated fee. So instead of just a $500 fine, it'll go 100, 300, 500.
Right, for a, a nuisance dog at large.
Yeah, several other things as well.
Several other things, right. And that, that fee schedule will come back to us, when do you think?
Uh, soon, probably, uh, we just got to look at, I got to talk to Jeremy about where it's going to reside and stuff, but it's ready to go. So I would think by, uh, at the next month at the latest.
I think our first week in June meeting is going to be pretty loaded, but maybe the second meeting.
Yeah, we're not in a huge rush, so.
Okay, thank you. All right, if you don't mind, Chief, because this will deal with everybody who has an animal in the city, let me just try to open it up for public comment quick. Everyone, this is a public comment period for Proposed Ordinance 2025-11. You're welcome to come forward in the chamber and have your three minutes, state your name, or you're welcome to come off mute, um, with the understanding, you know, that you get your three minutes, state your name, but there is going to be the fee schedule come back in conjunction with this. All right, public comment period's open, you're welcome to come forward, raise your hand or come off mute.
Mayor?
You're welcome to come forward, Kendall. Well, we, we want to make sure we hear you. We, that's the reason. Please come forward with your strong voice, we hear you.
I no longer represent the county council on the animal control board, it's now Staff and Luke Searle. I will pass this information on, make him, make him aware of this ordinance that you're passing, or I'm assuming he'll pass tonight. Is he aware of it?
And we, we sent out all that information to him, so he's had it probably for almost two months.
Hey, I'll, I'll touch base with him then.
And your ordinance was, we had the antiquated when yours was fine.
So you didn't, so, so we should fall right in line with this?
Yes.
Yeah, and so I, I don't see any problem not having read it, but I'll look at it.
Okay, thank you very much, Kendall. And thank you, Chief, for doing such a good job to do outreach. He does it to Hydeout, Midway, Daniel, Charleston, of course, us and the county. So, and Independence, Interlochen, that's right, can't forget them too. So thank you very much. Okay, Chief, don't go anywhere. Any, any other questions or comments? Motions, please.
Quick question before I make the motion. The ordinance wording right now on section two has a typo that changes the meaning of the sentence quite a bit. Says the following sections of the Heber City Code are hereby repealed and replaces, but I think it's supposed to be replaced in their entirety as follows. As long as we're okay with that, change after a motion.
Last one. It's not, shall be guilty, but shall be guilty.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, so the mayor just pointed out on 6 dot 17 dot 010, uh, after title, the word should be shall be guilty of a Class B misdemeanor. With those two changes, uh, in place, I would move that we approve Ordinance 2025-11, uh, repealing the list of ordinances and replacing the ordinances in section two of the ordinance.
Thank you, thank you. Is there a second? Thank you. Any further questions? Okay, start with the vote, Sid.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, that shows the good work you've done, Chief, really appreciate it. We'll just be pushing that now to get the consolidated fee schedule back and get it finalized to Midway, right? And Interlochen and Hydeout and that new mayor and all of that, that's great. Okay, we are now ready for the last action item, which is Ordinance 2025-09, adopting a code amendment to allow the city to retain fee-in-luas for affordable housing. So Jeremy, you're going to present this?
Sure, thanks, Mayor. So let me just start out by saying that over the last couple of years, or pretty much since I started as city attorney, in every development agreement that we've negotiated, we spent a considerable amount of time making sure that, um, affordable housing, uh, requirements were in there. Per state law currently, we can't require any of those, they have to be a negotiated, issue that, that we put in there and we've, uh, pushed really hard to get those in there, even though developers have pushed back pretty hard on the, on a lot of those a lot of times. So I think we're, we're proud of the work we've done in trying to generate affordable housing and potentially generate fee-in-lu to put towards affordable housing and put towards projects. This is really just to allow the city a little flexibility in if we have a project that comes up, that the city has an opportunity to fund directly, that's a better, uh, way to fund that project, or to take some of that money and temporarily put it into, um, other uses, why we come up with projects, um, or why Wasatch County Housing Authority comes up with projects, so that we has that money on a temporary basis and then reinvest it in affordable housing in the future. So that is, just the purpose of this is, um, just to give the council a little more flexibility on those. Certainly, it's no indication that by any means, uh, that we don't support Wasatch County Housing Authority or that we don't intend to continue to provide significant funds to Wasatch County Housing Authority to allow them to, uh, to do their job.
Go ahead, Mike.
Is the reason we're doing this because currently we don't have the ability to accept fee-in-lu into our, and use it?
So currently, the way that our, uh, city code reads, any fee-in-lu that comes to the city automatically goes to Wasatch County Housing Authority. So this is just to allow some flexibility to say, we can still give that money to Wasatch County Housing Authority, uh, but if, you know, in certain circumstances, uh, you know, we may want to temporarily invest that money into other projects, uh, before then giving it to Wasatch County Housing Authority, we may have some opportunities, um, where it's more advantageous for the city to try to acquire some property or to try to invest this, um, and then potentially turn that property over to Wasatch Housing Authority. So.
Okay, so we were prohibited before by our own code.
Yeah, so the intent here is just to get some flexibility in certain circumstances to say that, you know, in this case, we believe that this, this is, you know, we, we want to take this and, you know, either temporarily use it before we turn it over or potentially reinvest in some other projects or, um, you know, just, just give this flexibility.
Are there any other questions from the council at this point? Comments?
So, um, Matt and I presented, we have two members of the Wasatch Housing Board here, and I appreciate you guys being here. So we presented last night to a, had a, a pretty long discussion. So, and I think, in my opinion, this gives the city a little bit of flexibility for the fact that, you know, as we go about trying to help with this, um, issue, and it's not going away anytime soon, and it's probably not going away at all, but at least it helps us because as we know, we, we are very interested in trying to help with this situation as far as affordable housing, workforce housing, especially for our essential workers and so on. So, again, we had a great discussion at, uh, Housing Authority last night. We talked about a lot of stuff and I think we're headed, the Housing Authority, I think we, we have some really good, uh, ideas and things that, um, we're going to be working on. And, um, so, again, counsel, we, we did go and discuss with them and we had, yeah, we definitely have pushback and you'll probably hear a little bit, but, um, again, we presented it to, we wanted to be as transparent as we could. We discussed a lot about, um, being transparent and if we use that fee-in-lu to go to the Wasatch, I, I would recommend to go to the Housing Authority and say, hey, this is what we're doing, just keep them involved and making sure everybody's on the same page.
Tony, pull up the proposed ordinance on the screen, please. Uh, nope. One more, one more down.
I just saw it to the.
Really embarrassed now because there's a typo on this one as well, so.
The first sentence, right?
Next agenda, information, Tony?
Yep.
Tony, that's, that's the one. If you could just pull that up down right there. Thank you very much. So here's the changes, everyone, that's on the screen, it's what's being discussed for Ordinance 2025-09. Okay, sorry to interrupt you, Jeremy, and is there anything else you want to say on that?
No, just that there's a type halfway down E, there's a sentence that starts Heber City may request that the any, so it should just say Heber City may request that any, remove the the.
Okay.
So I have a question.
Thank you.
Would it be all right to hear from?
Yep.
Yeah, it's a public.
The Housing Authority from, from, um, council member, um, and yes.
Okay.
Kendall and Kent.
Either way.
And we can do that with the public comment time period too. So public comment's now open. Come on up, Kent. And, uh, we will have, take public comment on Ordinance 2025-09 to allow the city to retain fees and luas. Thank you.
My name is Kent Shelton. I, uh, serve on the Wasatch County Housing Authority Board and have had the opportunity to serve, uh, as a board member with Mayor Franco, when she served previously, and Councilman Johnston and, uh, Councilman Ostergaard, who's presently serving on the Wasatch County Housing Authority. Present to, to what we discussed last night, uh, maybe I can just say, it just seems a little bit premature to talk about the discussion about Heber City renewing those impact fees for the, and, and it was brought up, the 547 units of the Jordan L. Ridge, uh, to, to use that for Heber City housing, uh, that, uh, it was our understanding it would be housing that would be developed in the central Heber project to bring the housing back to town. Now, that, that's not, not problematic. Housing needs to be where transportation is, and that was discussed last night, uh, with the transportation needs and the, and the city services, uh, grocery stores, schools, churches and so forth, uh, they, they need to be here. I think where it is a little premature and, and Heber City rightly does do, um, much of the master development agreement, that's not in the affordable housing, we send that back for when, when a request comes in, it has to be approved with the city. So, uh, when they craft the master development agreement, that does fall with Heber City that does this. However, uh, I kind of felt that the feeling with our meeting last night, we, we kind of settled on the need for a full-time director. We're kind of a, uh, not big enough to be a suburban city, but too small to be a small town, and we're to that point where we, we do need to work together. And should Heber City decide to, to opt out and, and retain all of the fees, it kind of effectively handcuffs or almost dissolves the Wasatch County Housing Authority when Heber City can take the fees and do this. I, I think that we need to look more closely at being a partnership and creating one if we do need a full-time director and, and creating that position. if we do need a full-time director and creating that position so that the other municipalities, Midway, Charleston, Daniel, Wallsburg, they're not left out entirely on this. That they, they also have a stake in this. And whether they like it or not, it needs to be brought up so that, that all the parties have an opportunity to have a say in this. When, when Heber City jumps out, it also, it kind of dissolves that and the smaller ones, they're going to have to have a stake and they're also going to have to open their wallets to create this position or to help to create this position that would help with that. Currently, the Wasatch County Housing Authority has helped out with down payment assistant loans, which you're familiar with if you've served in the past. We've become a cooperating partner with mutual self-help homes that right now that stands or at the end of 2026, we will have just shy of 200 homes that were built with the mutual self-help program in Heber City. Last night, Brad Bishop, the director of the mutual self-help homes came in and the question was, was put to him, well, how many people are staying? Because there are issues about those homes are not deed restricted and how many of them are using this as an opportunity to flip the home and sell out? And Brad sent information back to our chairman, Councilman Crittenen from the, from the county council, that 84% of the, or 125 of the 148 homes that have been built here by mutual self-help since 2011 are occupied by those same people that, that built that. That's a pretty good statistic. I would say that probably 84%, you wouldn't find that of just a private homeowner that are occupied. People move a lot and that's, I think that's pretty, pretty high marks for us. So we have been of a cooperating partner in, in loans to mutual self-help homes. We have also been heavily involved with the Prestige one and two, which you would remember if you were previous, then these were homes that are directly east of the Spring Gardens Senior Living Center that told, I believe, and don't quote me on this, I think there's 38 in one and 28 in the other. And I might be wrong on those numbers, but that are qualifying senior residents in those facilities. Some, I think the second one was 55 and older. I guess that's a senior citizen. We're getting closer to that all the time. So we've helped, helped with that. We've also had others that were from way in the past. The Crown Homes, it was, it was just a small quantity of those that was built out in the Wheeler Park and Reach Homes and also One Habitat for Humanity Home, which was built down on the formerly the Public Works Site, Heber City Public Works Site down on Fifth West. And I don't know, is it 100 or 200 north where the old Public Works Facility was? So we have, we have had our hands in this. It's not the Wasatch County Housing Authority sitting there. I think we've got some pretty good track records that have shown with what we've done. I would just caution our city councils not to, to jump the gun to say, well, I would like to see us work together for a director that we can work rather than have everybody pull up stakes and say, we're taking our dolls and dishes and going to a different sandbox. And when we divide this up, it's kind of starting over and, and it really is. So I would hope that we could, from a standpoint of cooperation, to cooperate and do some synergy working together that way rather than have us lose out entirely. All of the, the homes that are, are built or created are in Heber City right now anyway. You've got the benefit of the mutual self-help homes, the 200 homes. They're not sitting in any other municipality. They are, they are in Heber City. And the, many of the loans are for homes in Heber City, not all of them, obviously. That was the down payment assistant loans, but a good percentage of that, and I don't know the, the exact, but, but the down payment assistance loans that we were heavily involved in in the past, kind of not so much now, were for homes that were purchased here in Heber City. Help Homes has benefited school teachers. I think there's a, a public police officer that's currently involved in one from what they said last night, Mr. Bishop indicated. So I think we've got a pretty good track record and I just would hope that we could say, hey, can we throw the brakes on this and look at this just a little bit before Heber City pulls out and says, you know, we're going to take ours and start over. But that's all. I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Kendall Crittenen, Wasatch County Council and Chair of the Housing Board. Appreciate Kent sharing that information. We talked about a lot of that as Mr. Ostergaard said last night in the meeting. And one thing, and he alluded to it, those projects, as he said, are in Heber City. Those projects were funded with fee and lieu money from county projects, the vast majority of them. So the county money that's come in from county, you know, Victory Ranch and up on the hill and all of those came in fee and lieu because just like last night, it doesn't make sense to put affordable housing up on the middle of the golf course on top of the mountain. So you don't build it there. Fee and lieu, you build it where stuff is and that makes sense. The county took that same position and we used that money to build affordable housing in Heber City to help. So anyway, I don't, I don't need to say a lot more. I, as I stated in the letter that I sent to you prior to this board agenda item or this county council agenda item on the 6th of May, I took great issue in the staff report that was listed in that meeting of the background of affordable housing. The Housing Authority has indicated it is not able or willing to utilize the fee and lieu for anything other than subsidizing mortgage interest or for qualified home buyers and strategic low-interest loans to affordable housing organizations. Those, and yes, we've done a lot of that. Those are little things. But as been shared, there's been many others too. And, and I took great issue with that and I sent, in the email I sent to you prior to that meeting, Mr. Ostergaard apologized to me no fewer than three times last night for the wording in that statement. But it hasn't changed in the staff report today. It's still the same statement. And I guess, Mr. Cook, you're, you're sadly misinformed, not be willing to meet with you and help you understand where you're wrong on that statement. I think if you've been listening, we have done.
I, I will tell you, I did not write the staff report, but I agree with you that that is.
Your name's on it.
I know. I agree that that is not a correct statement and that was poorly worded on the part of Heber City and that is certainly, you know, I, I don't think the position of the city council. So we apologize.
Who writes the staff report?
We, we, there's, a lot of people wrote that one because I was under the gun and couldn't, couldn't get it done. So other people stepped in and.
But you had two weeks to fix it.
We did and I apologize.
Whoever writes it leaves the E off your name too, by the way.
So I, I do apologize and.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, that's all right.
Oh, oh, yeah. I just thought, yeah, sorry, apologize.
And I will say, I don't, I don't want to interrupt your public call, but I will say like, this idea, I mean, I don't think any of us think that this was any indication that we're pulling out of the Wasatch County Housing Authority. I think when, when some of this, I think, comes to fruition, I think maybe the Housing Authority is going to recognize why we did this and benefits that are going to come to this and hopefully money that's going to flow back to the Housing Authority. We are working to get more apartments at a more affordable housing rate, push down the, because right now, under our Jordanell Ridge agreement, most of those are, should be at 80% AMI. We're trying to work with the developers to push those down to 60% AMI.
Pointed out 80% AMI in the county's market rate.
Yeah, exactly. And that's why we're trying to push these and trying to get more one, two, three bedrooms as opposed to just developers developing all one bedroom because that's, you know, what they could do under the current development agreement. So I, I do think the Housing Authority will recognize eventually that what we're trying to do is, you know, benefit the, the housing situation. It's, we have some creative ideas to do it, I would say.
I guess, I guess my statement to that is one I made several times last night. I, I don't understand how that same thing can happen within the Housing Authority, but I guess we'll see what happens.
And, and we will have, as, as I started out with, we've negotiated a sinew from a number of different developments, not just Jordanell Ridge, to try to get.
Possible fee and lieu.
We're, we're looking at 20, 30, 40 million dollars is what we're looking at.
What do you mean 20, 30, 40 million?
Well, you, you gave the number. How many in Jordanell Ridge?
There are 576 affordable housing units.
28,000, that's 16 million dollars. And, and it's been shared with me that you're, you're going to get a lot more than that. You're looking at 65,000 ERU out of, out of. Yeah. And I, and I suspect up on the hill will be a lot more than 28. So we're not looking at 16, we're looking at somewhere beyond 20 million.
Discuss an executive session, so I'm not.
Yeah, I, I understand that that stuff's all in, but that's what we're talking about. So anyway, that's all I've got to say.
Well, thank you, Kendall. I'm, I'm wondering if this council would consider just verbally discussing right now some kind of commitment to help towards the FTE with the Wasatch County Housing Authority so they don't feel that we're just dropping and walking away. Is there something we can do right now or soon to try to help the Housing Authority so that they could get a full-time person? What can we do?
Can I, I'll speak?
Please.
Thank you so much, Kent and Kendall. You're, you're, we're all in this together and I want to allay your fears. We want to, we talk about this a lot, sometimes in council, sometimes out. We, we are looking to partnership more closely with the, with the, with not just the Wasatch County Housing Authority, but the other entities in here. We realize as Heber City that this is the right place to put affordable housing, where the service are, where the work people work. I mean, we learned that, I think, Kendall, you were up at the Wasatch Summit, Economic Summit last, okay. Well, we talked about this extensively and I came away just even more convinced the only way to do this is collaboratively county-wide. So, and here's how it works. How do you fund that gap? And Heber City has basically the, the ability to, as we negotiate annexations and/or zone changes, that's when, that's the only time anybody has the ability to negotiate something. And, and we've done that to the best of our ability. Maybe we could have been better, but we've really, really hammered on this for the last couple of years with everything north of town. But what, what's really clear is the gap is huge and we want the flexibility and the leverage with developments to be able to be creative in what we do. But it really mostly impacts Heber City. We provide housing for people in the county, county employees, Midway employees, pretty much everybody. We are the housing authority or we are the housing, affordable housing area. And it makes sense to stay here. We're the, really the only ones that have been able to do that with our stuff. So to make this successful though, everybody's got to participate. And the only way that's going to happen is through the County Housing Authority. And hopefully we can expand the County Housing Authority to get, include Daniel, Midway, Interlochen, Charleston, Independence, maybe Wallsburg. They, they really just are left out and don't participate right now. I, I don't think any of them have any ordinances that, that, that talk about housing. So I guess that's what'd be wordy, but we, we in no way want to distance ourselves from the Wasatch County Housing Authority. The opposite. We want to ingrain, ingrain ourselves closely with you and definitely hire. We, we've talked about this already. When's the point when we help and we hire a full-time housing manager? Right now, we're doing Mountainlands Housing, Mountainlands Community Housing Trust.
Yeah, and they're our consultants, which is a great asset that we have at the Housing Authority right now because they're taking.
They're a huge asset.
Yeah.
This is not an end run around the Housing Authority at all.
And with that, I think that will help if we get a director for the Housing Authority. That's kind of the temporary until we get that and use them the best we can. So. But again, they cost money. So any of that.
I'll just say, as we, as we, if we, if we want, have a project that we need to buy the land, that really falls back on the Heber City taxpayers. I mean, we're the one that's going to be funny. If, if we're going to waive impact fees, in the end, it goes, it really flows back to the citizens of Heber City. And that's.
That's a good point.
It needs to really flow to the citizens of the county. And that's why we need to stick, we would need to work together as county, city, and all the cities. It's, it's a county problem, not a Heber City problem, though we are a major part of the solution.
Sid, you, you talked about Jason's group, the Mountainland, I think that's what it's called. Do they not have an interest in staffing their organization at a higher degree to be able to help with the demand that's being put on the county right now?
We can ask the question, but just knowing how big they are with their current endeavors, they are playing developer also. So Jason is spread thin. Angelica is probably our go-to person and she's running, you know, the Heber City or Wasatch County. We can ask them, but then it's going to cost money, right? And again, we had discussions where, okay, Heber City is going to have to pony in. Wasatch County is going to have to. All the cities or the county here are going to have to put into that, want it to make it successful. So.
Yeah, that helps. I, I understand the money. I'm trying to make sense of the reality that a, that a government employee is a bit more expensive than a normal employee. And so, or than an employee in a private sector or something like that. So I wonder, I wonder if it doesn't make dollars go further in, in Mountainland or something like that where it's not a, a government employee, given the retirement savings, the, the way that.
Yeah, the benefits.
It's just that money goes further faster in a different way. Do you know, and if somebody else in the room knows, do we know, pick a calendar year, I don't care if it was last year or any year anybody knows, what, what are the funds that go to the, the county, the Wasatch County Housing Authority right now? Like, how many dollars are going to, to them in a year? How much of that is from Heber? How much of that is from the other cities? Like, does anybody know that answer? I don't know that answer.
No, Kendall, do you want to speak to that?
It varies by year.
And, and I realize it varies by year, but I'm just trying, I'm trying to get an understanding because first of all, Kendall, I, I think, I couldn't, I don't know that I would have reacted. In fact, I guarantee you, I would have reacted even more poorly to the way that was worded if I were in your shoes, having looked and said, wait a second, did you not see all the things we've done? I, I, I hear you and I think I would have reacted more.
I had a stack of projects since I, since 20.
Yeah, it was incorrect.
Three and a half inches thick.
Yeah, it was incorrect. I, I think that's, I think that's really important to state. And the next thing I would state is, and it's a really tricky thing to state because we can only state so much, but the next thing I would say is, is kind of what Mike alluded to. I think there would be a time very soon that you individuals, you could look and go, oh, that's what they wanted to do. Got it. We can't really expect right now. But I think there's a time, because it's a very, it's a, it's a, not a small project, but it's a specific thing. And I'm sorry that this and the wording especially came across as Heber City pulling out, we're not interested, we're not going to be, because that is not the case at all.
There wasn't the wording, Heber pulling out. It's that we haven't done anything and so we need to do it on our own. That's the wording that was offensive.
Sure, that, and that part's offensive. I just, I just mean, at some point, either reading that or reading through the ordinance, there's this mentality and Kent alluded to it as, Kent, I think, sorry, alluded to it as well, that there's this mentality, Heber might be pulling out and what does that do to our future? We are not intending to pull out in any way, shape or form, but there's one instance where something is interesting that we'd like some flexibility on. And so that's a little tricky.
As far as your question on how much, I know I could go through. I, I've spent the last two weeks since your meeting on the 6th looking at those and some of them, some of them have numbers, some of them don't. For example, Victory Ranch, Victory Ranch was probably the first housing project that was done in the county after the legislature, bless their hearts, mandated in, in 2000 that counties and cities were to have an affordable housing plan. Their total was somewhere upwards of close, probably close to $2 million. I know they paid a large chunk of that upfront and then the rest of it was apportioned out to each of the lots as they close, then they pay that share of it. And there's other projects like that. Some unpaid, some unpaid upfront, some, you know, where they paid fee and lieu. like that. Some unpaid, some unpaid upfront, some, you know, where they paid fee in lieu. So I don't know what that amount is. In in the past years, Heber City has done a great job of all of the subdivisions that are going in of extracting or requiring affordable housing. And I know it, after the legislature a couple of years ago, blessed hearts, took away our ability to fee in lieu or or require affordable housing unless, you know, they agreed. I sometimes wonder if if you with some of the things that Heber does, that you if I sometimes wonder if you forget that if somebody's annexed in, you can ask about anything of them. And I don't think you always ask as much, but that has to do with a whole bunch of other issues. But anyway, but Heber's done a great job. We've got all kinds of mix. We got townhouses. We got, you know, single family homes. We got a lot of them. They're all over. And and there's a lot of them still to come out to North Village projects. And that's great. That's why we have Angelica and Mountainland to look at those, to income qualify the people that are going into those, and to watch, to make sure that they stay income qualified. And and that's costing us a fair amount of money. Now, if we hire, you know, when we find or whatever, go to a full time director, whether we still have Mountainland do that, or that we hire a director that can do that themselves, plus work with the developer, as Mr. Brower said last night, the Housing Board doesn't have time to do that. And I comment, it's as needed as Heber City. But so who's going to do it? You got something in mind. But anyway, so I don't know what the amount is. It's a lot.
Without knowing the amount, then, is is it fair to say, and I don't know this, so I'm guessing, but is it fair to say that Heber is the vast majority of the funds?
Like, no.
Or is Midway?
It's what I said. The vast majority of the funds have come from county projects. As county projects.
Is Midway, is Charleston, is?
There's a few, and unfortunately, Midway hasn't done much. I served several years ago, under Mayor, Mayor Tatten. We spent a whole summer meeting monthly. The effort then was to put to unify all of the affordable housing owed in in all of the zero sticks. And and we worked very hard on that. We put together some, and the county adopted some of it. Midway adopted, I think Heber adopted. Heber, Midway's not followed theirs at all. I I look at the fee in lieu we could have got from some of those high level developments in Midway. I don't know why. This was back when they could have.
Yeah.
I don't know why they didn't extract the fee in lieu out of them. But they didn't. There's in in my stack of papers, I found one project from Midway, couple, maybe a couple. But the majority have come from county projects money, and Heber City's now providing a fair number of units.
The the way, the reason I was trying to ask that, the reason I thought Heber might be biggest is from the comment of if if Heber pulls out, which is not, but if if Heber pulls out, it effectively kills the program. I don't understand that if the county is the majority. Does that make? That's what I'm trying to.
We're not talking about that at all on the county level. It's just, who knows what will come.
Okay.
Depending on how.
Because again, I don't intend, we don't intend. I can tell you positively, I know there's a degree of trust that's never been, that's not hasn't been here for a long time. But I can tell you, we are not intending to pull out of this. But I but I'm trying to true up the comment of if if Heber pulls out, it effectively, I don't remember your wording exactly, but effect, something was effective, it effectively kills a program, which I don't, I don't think.
It's how much money comes out of that.
Sure, I just don't.
What the expectation to help manage it.
Yeah.
Without any funding.
Sure.
I mean, that's all.
Again, just trying to true that up in mind in my mind, because I think there is appreciably more development land left in the county than there is city.
I I joked last night, I was I was joking, but as we talked several times about, it it's obviously the affordable housing to be on a transit system close to. And I I I joked, I says, I I recognize now that Wasatch County has made a terrible mistake. High Valley Transit bus stops should be in Midway, so that we could have pushed the affordable housing over there.
Ah.
By the transit.
Terrible mistake.
I was joking when I said it, but maybe not really.
Don't let Mayor Johnson hear you say that. He said, don't let Mayor Johnson hear you say.
Well, I'd tell her.
You have the authority to do that.
Kevin Payne was there. I I wouldn't have any problem. I'll tell him, Mayor Johnson, that. But anyway, so if that answers your question.
It does, yeah. And I just, you know, I don't know another way to say it, other than say, I promise you, that is not our intent, and I promise you, it will make way better sense. If if what we're trying to think about works, it will make way better sense soon.
Mike, go ahead, and then I've got a comment.
Aaron, I'm just add some more context, context, and Kendall going to jump in and Kent and Sid. So the there is no funding source for the Wasatch County Housing Authority, zero public funding. It all comes from, it all has come from fee in lieu. The the county has assessed when they could until two, three years ago, two years ago, when the state cut it off. But before that, with their agreements with, like he said, Tu hay, Victory Ranch, Deercrest, everything, really. But the but the high end projects gave the most was the most. And that's where the monies come in. And so the 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 problem is managing affordable housing and auditing and and maintaining this housing in perpetuity costs money. And it's being funded by one time sources of fee in lieu that are going to end. Because now the county, the state does not allow the county to require fee in lieu. And we can't require fee in lieu. So it's a it is a thought that when's that going to end? The the bank account keeps going down every year. Now, they have loaned out, they've done some really good things of, you know, the no interest loans or low interest loans, and those are all being paid back. So it was, it's it is a recycling of the money. But that's not going, that can't last forever, too. So in reality.
I'm actually, I appreciate all the background. I'm actually in favor of funding something.
And I like funding things that come back.
I just wanted to be really clear that that, one, we're not pulling out. Two, I didn't understand how, even if we were pulling out, that it would kill everything. I still don't understand that part.
Well, it would kill the partnership. Let's.
Sure.
It would kill.
That I that I believe, especially.
We don't want to do that. It's it's similar to Wasatch Irrigation Company saying, Heber's going to take us over. We have no desire to run an irrigation system. And I don't think we have any desire to run a housing authority. So.
That the background helps.
We depend on each other. So anyway, but long term, that's an issue. The funding isn't, we don't get it every year, never get it. It's it's one time funding, and we keep trying to find it.
I wonder if we, oh, I'm sorry, Mayor. I was just saying, I wonder if we, you know, I'm I don't know that we're ready to do it tonight as far as numbers or something, but I wonder if there's a way for us to think about. First of all, we need the flexibility to do it, but actually literally do, because right now, all of those funds that would be coming in go to the housing authority, and they haven't necessarily. I'm not saying, I'm not knocking any, I'm not saying that's something negative, that they haven't yet hired that person, right? So if we wanted to potentially redirect some part of those funds, or some part of the negotiation with future developments or something like that to to come into an FTE kind of salary, right? What I'm envisioning there is if we have another development come forward, we can talk about a fee in lieu with a, you know, let's call it a ten percent rider on every unit to fund a person that is managing that. Like, this is a different mentality. We haven't said that yet to a developer in a in discussion. And to your point, Mike, like, that's a that's a good thought. Like, the reality is, if we're if we as a Wasatch Housing, Mountainland Housing, Heber is going to get the most that we can out of these programs and police them the way that we need to and make sure that they're working the way we need to, we need somebody paying attention to it.
Yeah.
Ultimately, the the same developers paying those fees in lieu should be paying, I think, a little bit more. Now, they haven't yet. So we still need to think about, are we willing to fund something? I am willing to fund something. I don't know what that looks like. But I wonder if we could think about, what do we have coming in the next couple of years minus one potential thing that we're thinking about, right? What do we have coming? And do we do we think about a section of that that goes to, you know, to a to a higher or to a, you know, something like that, or to a fund that is perpetual, that keeps a fund, right, to to something that makes it so that it can stick around? Instead of just paying it this year, could we somehow make it earn interest or something and pay for it for a while or a long while or something like? I don't know. I'm not not ready to have the specifics on that tonight, but I think that's absolutely a good call.
And I I just want to say, you know, I threw it out there. Are we are we willing to say, hey, within two years, we're going to work with the county housing authority to help fund a certain percentage of an FTE? I say two years because government's slow, okay? It's not going to happen this year or this budget cycle. But in the next budget cycle, are we willing to commit to them and say, yes, we want to work with you in fiscal year twenty seven to provide some funding? We don't know what it is yet. But on a continuing basis, we've done it with the grant rider. We've done it with our trails person. We need to do it with the FTE. And the county wants us to make that offer to them so that they can come up with what they need and then work with the other entities, too. The other entities will come kicking and screaming likely, because they don't want to deal with it. But it's still their issue. It's still their people and still their essential workers for the future, too.
We have them here.
You know, we've just got to start talking about it in every interlocal meeting if we really want to push it. If we don't, it won't get pushed. You know how many times I had to come back to the interlocal on the Animal Services MOU update? It took two years, everybody, and it was basically the same thing, just updating it, okay? And if you don't keep pushing and pushing and pushing, it's just not going to happen, because we all agree, it needs to happen. But now we have to really take concrete steps. So are we willing to make that commitment verbally to them?
Oh.
That in fiscal year twenty seven, that we're going to be working with the housing authority and the county, as well as other entities, to help fund this FTE position?
Absolutely.
I I still dislike the FTE position wording. And the only reason is, I just don't know who the best person to do that job is.
I don't.
FTE speaks to a government employee. It doesn't necessarily, and it speaks to a single employee. It doesn't speak to a, I don't know, perhaps perhaps there's a consulting firm that specializes in this, but is going to attach three people to it. I don't, what I'm saying is, I, everything you said, I agree to, except for the FTE at the part.
I understand.
I think a salary dollar figure is fine, because I don't care where I I care, but I that gives us flexibility. It gives flexibility. I think FTE sends a signal that the city is paying for a county employee, which is a weird thought process.
Well, we're matching.
If I may speak to that.
Yes.
There's a couple of alternatives. Obviously, the person could be hired and work for the board. The board would be their boss. That's one option. The second option is, we do a deal with Mountainlands, where the employee is the Mountainlands employee, but they're assigned to the board to carry out policy day to day. Or third is to hire a consultant, who would be a ten ninety nine consultant, right? We can pay them their salary, but they do all their taxes, they do all their own thing, and and they then, of course, do the work for the board. So there's some options there. Takes a finesse to figure out what you actually want, but there are options.
And go ahead, Sid.
Yeah, it's real critical, because, you know, the housing authority, we we meet once a month. We're not, we're not in the loop up on the hill. We need somebody. Talking to Jason Glinton, he knows exactly what's going on up in the hill as far as housing, affordable housing and all that. We need somebody that like that, and plus somebody that can go and lobby for us, small town, that can go, because there is money there. The state has money. But a lot of times, as far as I understand, we just don't have the population base to qualify for that money. So we just need somebody to go up and lobby and and look out for us and but understand the the little details that I'm I'm not smart enough to understand.
You don't think our city lobbyists or county lobbyists would be able to fulfill that role?
They might. They might. And it's just.
I think the county has the same lobbyists we do. I I do believe is your, who's your lobbyist? Dave Stewart? Stewart?
Yes, somebody's.
Yeah, so we have the same lobbyists. And yes, he he could be, he he could be shouldered with the task to go up to the Capitol and and marshal whatever strategies or things that we need. Absolutely.
He's largely focused on transportation right now, from what I understand, UDOT and and bypass and all of that. Is that correct for as far as our interests?
Right now, that's what he's focused on, is trying to advance the Heber Valley Corps as quickly as we can, once it's approved alignment. But no, his his strength is the Senate. He's got a personal relationship with the Senate Presidents, the leadership, and that's where his strength comes from.
Sid, I I like the idea of, I mean, effectively, you just said the same thing I did, which was, we know that we've got kind of a master operator in in Jason right now. Now, Jason may not be there next year, may not be there four years from now, whatever. So so I still am of the opinion, like, saying that we want to fund something makes sense. I just don't know if that something is a Wasatch County employee or a city employee.
I understand. So it's it's really just funding for the administration needs of the Wasatch County Housing Authority, right?
And Mayor, if I may, really quick, I I believe what you said earlier, Mayor, is that we should use a model that's already in effect. This one that we use for the grant riders, when we use for the the trail person. I I think that's the model. But one thing you need to be thinking about is Midway may not come to the table, Daniel may not come to the table, Hightower may not come to the table. And if they don't, are you still willing to put the ante in with the county to make this happen? You need to come to terms with that, because there's a good chance they won't.
Oh, I.
I think so.
I think Heber City needs to lead along with the county on this. Other entities don't have our staffing. They don't have our budget. They don't have our bandwidth. They they will eventually, and they need to know it's an expectation. And we need to do what we need to do with the county.
One catch about that, Mayor, is, you know, by the time Midway does, do they have any more developments to negotiate? Right? By the time that Daniel does, does, right?
We'll never run out of development. Neither will they.
But I think there's there's something to be said. I agree with you. There's something to be said for us leading. Set the example and and say, and because then it's it's easier to say, we want you to come be a part of this, too, and we are putting our money where we say, where our mouth is.
When we're the county seat, it just gives us more responsibilities in the county.
I I think we got an uphill battle, but I agree. Maybe these entities won't, but I think we got to help educate them that whatever's happening is is housing their workers. They need to contribute to some degree to the the funding that, because they're fertile. Are there all our workers living in their town? No. And so that we've not reached out to them in the past, and then maybe that's all of our faults. But I think on this, as we move forward with this, we need to, because it it benefits them, too. And as you said last night, the legislature is probably going to require them to do something.
I know.
Bless their hearts.
Just wait.
Remember, the year the parks drug on for three years now, right? Now, twenty twenty seven is going to be a year of affordable housing in with the Wasatch County Housing Authority. Seriously, we just have to do that. Go ahead, Mike.
I'm going to make a bold statement, that I think this needs, the operation of the housing authority needs to be done. We fund recreation and the library and the fire department. We do that on a countywide basis. It's an increment on my on my taxes I pay to the county. And everybody pays it, and you pay it according to the wealth of property that you own. And I think that makes a real good sense, because people that own a lot of wealthy Tu hay, Victory Ranch, whatever, property, probably don't really work, do work here in our county. They demand services, and they don't provide any. You go down to the lowly people, they're living in the apartments, they're providing all the services, and they don't demand the same services. So that that's, to me, is what is fair. And that.
It's probably never been looked at. I think what you're talking about, instead of an interlocal, you're talking about creating an SSD of some kind.
I'm talking about.
With all those others.
I'm talking about us as cities supporting the county council in funding affordable housing as a property tax increment.
But it's got to be, and we can look into that.
Like we fund the library.
Yeah.
It's not.
Or like Park and Rec or everything else.
Parks and Rec, right?
But they're a special service district.
It's fair to everybody.
It would need to be a special service district.
That's how we fund affordable housing.
We need.
In perpetuity.
I'll investigate that. I, it's not a bad idea.
No.
Other, we know what we know what the legislature thinks of SSDs.
Yes, we do.
And it's not a lot. I mean, if we're talking a hundred thousand, two hundred thousand a year, it's not really that much.
No, it's not. So good idea.
Remember the NEXUS study that you did several years ago? That ties right into that.
Well, and that NEXUS study happened when we were looking at twenty eight thousand pre-RU was established in two thousand, when the housing authority was put together. And it's it doesn't buy, it may be a fairly substantial amount then, but it doesn't buy a pittance now.
No, you'd have to.
And the NEXUS study was an effort to see what that was. And the county attorney, Heber City's attorney, and Midway's pushed back. They says, we're just opening ourselves up to litigation to charge more for.
I understand. It's it's just one piece of.
Yeah, we didn't get support from our legal, our legal departments, because they they could see problems with it, and it probably had. We had a, we had a challenge in Morgan County on the same thing. And and we didn't, and that's why we did the NEXUS, too, because Morgan did something, and they didn't have a study. And so we commissioned the NEXUS study to to look at it.
Which was great when it was done fifteen years ago or twenty years ago.
But even with that, our our attorneys would would support raising that fee in lieu from twenty eight. So anyway, thanks.
Kendall and Kent, I'm really glad that you came on tonight, because we're not slammed with so many items that you couldn't participate the way that you did. Really appreciate your time to come to us. I hope you're feeling somewhat better about what the council has discussed here. I'm going to have to turn it back to them for any further comments or motions. But I I think you've seen a real commitment for the ones that will be not up for election this year, as some of us are, but to especially twenty twenty seven, fiscal year twenty twenty seven, to work extensively with the county and on any of these ideas, right? It's never going to move forward unless the funding's there. It's never going to move forward unless the funding's there. Okay, any other comments, questions or motions, council?
Well, I'll make a motion. I move that we adopt ordinance twenty twenty-five dash oh nine, adopting code amendments to allow the city to retain fees and lieu for affordable housing, which just affects, um, section eighteen dot one oh two dot zero eight zero E as, as shown on our screen earlier.
And Mike, you'll take out the, the, the extra the.
Yeah, fix the grammar.
Thank you. Any other comments? Discussion, Sid?
Yes.
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 Okay, that passes four to zero with the one excused. Thank you very much. We're turning it over now to.
More work to do.
Yeah, as, as usual.
Yeah, let, let me just.
Next one.
Yeah, I think both Kent and Kendall.
Continues.
An honor to serve with you on the council or on the Housing Board. I think we have some, some interesting things that we're going to be looking at. And you guys, yeah, we're starting to think about some things to, yeah, and bringing more money into it, so we can leverage and, and do a lot more, so.
Right, but they're still, that's right, they're still participating.
Right.
Right. Right. That's true, because the county pays for them at this point. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and again, we appreciate your time and staying with us this long. Everyone, we're going now to communication items. Please, Matt, feel free to go ahead.
Trina, can you give me the presentation?
Thank you. See you again.
Council, I have four items I want to mention tonight. I'm going to use the screen here for just a moment, for my first item. Here, just for one moment. Just bringing that up, give me the presenter. Um, I'll talk to you briefly about the columbarium project. Uh, by way of teeing this up, uh, if you can picture your mind's eye, you've got the courtyard, right? And on either side of the courtyard, you've got the two columbariums. Uh, but in the courtyard towards the back, uh, there's been designed or plumbed for two water fountains, two water features.
Yes.
And I know that's very important to you. Those particular water features are not budgeted for. And working with, uh, uh, the general contractor, I've asked them to do some homeworks. Do you look into the different types of water fountains? And this is what they're suggesting to us, is these two, this water fountain here, see if I can, there you go. They're looking at something like this. Um, so I'm really asking you for input on two things. One is, do you want to proceed forward with the water fountain now? We'd have to do a budget amendment for it to include it as part of the project. And if you do, is this the type of water fountain you're looking for in the courtyard area? There'd be two on either side of the ramp that goes up to the main doors, just sitting there. It's already plumbed, it's ready for it. Uh, but want to see if you want to move with it now, and if so, if this is the design you're looking for.
How big is that?
That is, there would be.
A three foot diameter of the bar?
Yeah, could you, I, I would love to see it in space.
Like when you buy something from China, it comes like half the size that you thought.
I know.
I have a good, I have a good example of this.
Yeah, this is, we're not going to pay a tariff on this, right? It's, uh, it, there was a pit, wait, 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 just up, just up a little bit, right there, there's the weight, eighteen hundred pounds.
I like that it's cla, I want something classical.
Seventy-two high, eighty-four round, that's nice.
Eighty-four or seven feet?
Cool diameter, eighty-four inches.
Yeah.
Yeah, that seems pretty solid, seventeen.
And does this color or do one of the other colors match the brick better, Matt?
We, we would have to probably go out on site and look at the brick and see what they've got here and make sure it matched the best.
Well, match, match enough, it'd be totally.
You'd have to compliment.
Mm-hmm, absolutely, absolutely.
Or the, the, the finishing that goes above the brick.
What is the price?
Looks like it would. I mean, and it's older style, right? It looks like it's, it's like it's already aged, and that looks really, that fits really well with our traditional look.
So what it does is creates an ambiance in there of quiet. It, it's the white noise and reverence, so.
Having one in the center instead of two on each side.
What's that?
I thought we were having one in the center instead of two.
No, it's two on either side, uh, and the reason for that, yes, center's open, so it's an easy ramp right up into the front doors. So, Yvonne, the price here on this here, I think it's just over seven thousand for one, so it'd be fourteen for two. Then, of course, you got the installation that would go with, I don't know what that is. I have a project meeting tomorrow, perhaps, yeah. Probably double.
Probably another seven thousand.
It, it's probably fourteen times two, something like that, probably, just, probably.
I think it would really help sell, uh, niches and sell stuff, and people see that, oh, this is it. And that's our goal, is to market this and make it wow.
That's right.
I roll, insert I roll here for how much more that is.
I will get more detail tomorrow, but I wanted some direction tonight. Are, are you interested in moving forward now? And if so, are you interested in including this as part of your budget amendment to come back in June?
One from the bottom, just to see the water flow.
See and hear it.
And while you're showing that, my only real biggest concern is a, a warranty that this will fall apart in a couple of years?
That's why I've asked the general contractor to take point on this, because I would expect him to warranty it and to make sure that at least for the first year, it's, it's works.
Oh, it can't just be a year, I mean, s- s- sorry. I, I've seen too many concrete things the last few, I've been noticing, I guess, failing, meaning they just start to fall apart, especially. I, I'm even noticing our, our light poles on Main Street, some of those things are just crumbling, and, and I know it's probably from salt. And, and hopefully we will make, make sure there's no salt that gets on the, up here, but.
So, so on that point, hang on a minute, so on that point, remember, you, you, you've provided for a heating system in the courtyard. So there will be no salt, it'll be naturally heated, it'll melt to snow. And, um, this thing would be, um, yeah, so this thing would not run in the wintertime, obviously, because you would not want water running in the freezing weather. So it would be drained, it would be dried during the winter months.
I just, I'd like to see history, because, so for example, right in front of the school, the district office, they had all that nice sandstone, and then it's capped, all those caps are failing. They're falling apart.
Yep.
And so what's that? Fifteen, twenty years, fifteen years? Two thousand and four, twenty years, but they're just failing, they're just, that concrete's just.
Is it sealed?
Well, it doesn't have to be though. It's just the quality of the, of the product. I mean, there's just a form concrete, and the way we do it today is just press it together. It's, it's, yeah, so anyway, I just might, I just, can they show us examples of something that's ten years old, twenty years old?
That's fair.
Twenty years old?
That's fair.
Or is this just, or is this just a company that just started a year ago, and they're just picking these things out the door for seven grand?
Wholesale. Yeah, those are fair questions, uh, and we'll, I, I got a project meeting tomorrow, so I'll definitely answer those questions. But are you interested in moving forward if we can get the right fountain at this time?
I am.
Okay.
You mean a budget amendment for this current year we're in?
Next year.
Or coming forward in July on the new budget?
So we're hoping that the building's done in July, so they'd have to purchase these and have them installed probably by late June-ish timeframe.
Next year.
This year.
This year?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, it's plumbed, it's ready for it.
Any discretionary funds of any sort left?
The council does not.
Um, but what about, um.
Who does?
It's about engineering department, David.
Make friends well.
Russ says he's got money.
Notice the way you answered that question. I'm happy to make friends with whoever we need to make friends with.
So I'd love to see this, a mock-up somehow in the space, to see how it responds to the architecture, so.
I'm waiting until next year. I know you guys are going to hate me for that, but I'm sorry, we're tight. So if this was my own purse strings that I was pulling at, I'd be zipping it back up again and saying, I'm sorry, we're waiting until next year. Not that I don't want it, I would love to have this, but at this point right now, I just, dang it, I did not know that this was not included.
Yeah, this was not scoped as part of the project.
I honor that comment. I honor that, but it'll cost twice as much next year, because.
I know.
Yeah, once, once everything else is done.
It won't happen.
Once everything else is done, I think the cost will be too high.
Is there any other option, or is this the only option we have? Is there something that's similar? Or if we're having two of them, why not smaller ones?
What do you want different?
It, how many courtyards, um, I don't know, do I have to be specific?
Is the courtyard forty by forty, fifty by fifty?
It's pretty large, it's.
By sixty?
Can't be small.
It's pretty large. I don't know exactly, you mentioned Heidi. Oh, absolutely.
Columbariums are eight feet deep, aren't they?
I think so.
Eight feet's the right answer then. Seven feet's the right answer, right? Because if it's, it's as deep as the columbariums, it won't look out of place. If it's smaller than that, it will look out of place.
You're unproportioned.
Yeah, one on either side, at the ends of the caps of the columbarium as you're, right?
They've done this one based on my request, wanted it classy, you wanted to have, you know, the three tiers of the water coming down.
Yeah. It'll make a lot of trickly noises and.
That's the idea.
I think that's, I think that's great. I like this better than like a shooting in the air kind of fountain.
Columbariums will pay for it.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I just mean, like, even the fountains where it just shoots up and it.
What I've heard is more research, so I'll bring it back to you. So let me keep moving on. Uh, number two is the Valley Hills Drive Pressurized Irrigation Line. Um, I sent you an email about a week ago seeking your feedback. I met with Brett Anderson, I think he may have met with some of you as well. Um, essentially, uh, he's desirful to have the line put straight through as you've requested. Uh, he's indicating that everyone wants the meter, uh, but not everyone can afford it at this time. Most can and most will, but there's a few that can't afford it. And so what I'm asking tonight is that a go-no-go with installing this line in the fall by the Public Works Department.
Straight line, but you had said earlier that the larger lot people want to go.
Yeah, like Brett, he's got a larger lot. He'd extend his lot beyond the line to the far, far west south he could. I, I think most of them would want to extend it based upon the feedback that Brett gave me.
To the berm, right?
Straight. Now, the line is not going to be conflicting at all with the high-pressure gas line or the water.
No, no.
Go ahead, Mike.
No.
So to add to that, I, two things, I'm, I, I just talked with, someone talked with me last week and mentioned that area. So if we go a straight line, we come back like some distance, like fifty feet or something. There's a, still a huge hundred-plus foot right there on that north end, which would be a really great place for a community garden. Some such as Park City or Summit County had. Not some, I think we could probably find, um, somebody else could manage that, like a Hebrew Valley Community Garden Club. And, and I actually went and walked it, so on the very north end, where it gets really fat. And so I went over and I walked it with Brett on Sunday. Well, everything's on the south. This, okay, the southeast, sorry. East, the far east end, right by, the far east end is quite big. I think it is a great spot, um, because great sun, it's got decent, it would have water, I mean, the city would probably fund water, but I think somebody would build that. No, but it was so hard, hard to get to.
Anyone wanted deer fencing, because the deer would always come right down the corridor, and we always talked about how that would be an animal wildlife corridor too. So if you're going to put a community garden there, which I'm not against.
You need an eight-foot fence.
Deer fencing too, right?
I'm, I'm just throwing it out, that's, it's, I think it's a good idea, and I did go walk it, and there's tons of room for it, because. And I think what would be good is if Russ wouldn't, wait, wait, let's, let's just stake the, the, the offset that you want. You wanted a twenty-foot road or something?
Yeah, so that, I, when you were talking about running it straight through, we want to make sure that that line does not run through the properties or it's, it's our property, but we don't want Public Works to have to get into those properties to maintain the line. So we want that back behind the areas that they're maintaining. That, that was, I just maybe.
On the south side of wherever they maintain.
South side, and the other, another thing to consider there, Mike, is there really isn't great access to that location. I mean, that berm, that berm runs kind of to that area, and I think it's going to be continued. There's no place to park. It's not a really great.
I did talk to Brett about that, and said that there'd have to be some type of maintenance access on this, on the north side of that berm. It could not go all the way to it, that access.
We need a maintenance, we need a, well, we're going to have to access it anyway.
We're going to have some road there.
And wouldn't that go all the way down to the roundabout too?
No, it won't down, well, it'll go, it'll go down to the roundabout on five fifty east, yes.
That's what I meant, yeah. So it is a loop access road.
And it's going to be like a dirt, it's going to be like a dirt road that our works could get in there if they needed to. It's not, not like a.
Well, let's look at it.
Because I'm, the part I'm thinking of. There's that last home, and then you've got the Evans property, and it's in between that. Is that where you're talking about? Because it looks like it comes down, and there's private property, but at the same time, if you could just take a pathway to it, I'm thinking a pocket park.
Yeah, we, we intentionally did not put sidewalk or trail on that side, because there wasn't room. Kept it on the opposite side of the road. And then the other thing I wanted to say, and I apologize, I'm jumping in here, is our policy in the city is when irrigation is extended to your property, it's, you're supposed to pay it. So that's what our policy is everywhere else city. Uh, just, I want you to consider that as your decision.
So Russ would want option though. So Brett also mentioned that to me about a couple of people that just don't have the money. Could we just put a lien on their property, so when they die and sell it, because they're older? And when they, when the property sells, then that's, they, they have to.
It's been done before.
Paying, I mean, do we do that in, in, have we done that with Old Town, anybody?
I've done that with other cities, similar things like that.
That'd be one option, is just defer it. He, he pointed them out, and I know who they are, and they really probably, they actually probably won't even improve their, this license. They just don't have the funds to do it. And were we going to pull that up? I guess we weren't.
I don't have, I don't have the picture, I apologize. This is just a communication item, I apologize.
There's about two hundred and fifty feet at the far east end, that I don't know how anybody's going to make, take care of that.
I've seen it, I've driven past there, and as I've looked at it, it looks like something that would be a beautiful little community or just a neighborhood, common area, you know, to have a seat and a bench and some flowers, whatever, but you do have to deal with the deer in that area.
The access, I want to emphasize what Russ said, the access to that area would be difficult. There, there's no parking unless you park on Valley Hills Drive or in the new parking lot.
Saying if it's a neighborhood, it's just, it would just basically, um, it would just basically be for that area.
Effectively, they can do that now. If we do nothing, they could, yeah, they could. If we do nothing, they could, as a neighborhood, figure out that they want to just carve out that little triangle and take care of it altogether. Will they? Probably not. Doesn't make any sense.
They won't.
Right?
The access is on the other, it's on the south side of that road, so.
It's a weird little space to do anything with.
You'd have to cross the two roads to get over.
Yep, and then you have to climb up over a berm.
The two lanes of road.
You know what I'm saying? That's something for the future, because we will need more parking there sooner or later.
Sure.
And we didn't want to put it all on the Duke Farm, even though we were planning to do.
We would have to mow it in the city. We'd have to maintain it and mow it.
There may not be the answer right now, but go ahead, go ahead, Russ.
Yes, the property owners are interested in having the land, instead of having it go straight across, they're all interested in having more land and maintaining it all the way down. And I think that was the idea of the whole concept, was that what, this, this land may not be maintained, but these property owners are interested and willing to maintain it, and I thought that was the idea behind the leases, so.
But you're, you're, help me out, because it sounds like, it sounds like, uh, Matt or Mike, what was that guy's name?
Brett Anderson.
Sounds like Brett neighbors, and what Mike has said, is straight line. You're saying, I don't want a straight line, because if they're maintaining it, in any way.
I thought they all indicated that they were interested, those that are further to the east, the property gets incrementally larger, and my understanding was they are all interested in having that.
That's, that's the thing that I'm trying to clarify. I think they are interested in the land being all the way out, but they want that line to go straight.
I don't know about that.
I, I don't know if the line's an issue, you know, for them, whether it's straight or an angle, I think that's the issue.
Line should be wherever they're, on their south, wherever they.
Yeah, and Russ brought it up. They, they need, we need to access it, and that's probably, we don't want to be driving through their yard to access it. But go ahead, Matt, I'm sorry.
What, what Brett, what Brett has told me to wind this up is that everyone's interested in the license agreement, everyone is. Uh, most of them are interested in the. Most of them are interested in the PI, there's some that just can't afford it. And so decision, I'm looking to, feedback, I'm looking back from you, is are you still interested in installing that PI line?
Yes. Is it way too late to say, okay, it's a weird shape, it has really weird access.
Do we give it to the Trails Committee to make a really cool bike trail park that is hand-built and hand-maintained? And you can get into it from the road on a bike? No, it doesn't leave the center, it's behind the other side of the berm, right? And you get to it from the roundabout.
So just my hunch, based on my conversations with Brett and some others, is they wanted the berm there, because they wanted to keep the noise and the traffic out. And they would probably be resentful of having a public park right behind their homes, in my opinion, based on what I've heard. They want to extend their yards to, you know, have more space and more privacy. But I don't think they would support any type of public investment to bring more people behind their yards.
It will sound heartless in saying this. I understand that, but we didn't give it to them yet, so not taking anything away.
You are not.
They're never entitled to it in the first place.
Although, although you have.
It's getting to be harder than it is worth.
I hear you.
All we're trying to do is.
Although you have signaled that you would be willing to go into a license agreement, but yes, you have not entered into any of them yet.
Because one of the things that, I mean, I'll just throw this out here, one of the continually worried about is today's owners might be willing to maintain it and be, but what about future owners? There's nothing, that we've, we've got nothing to say that they won't just let it go.
I think the license.
With the pressurized irrigation, they won't let it go straight to back to the thistles.
Jeremy, is that license agreement, do you remember?
Right now, they don't want to, about ten years from now, who knows?
Yeah, so license agreement is recorded with the property, so if it's a, a change of residency, it would still be effective.
And they have to maintain it without, like, noxious weeds and all that stuff. Like, that's the type of maintenance.
I'd have to go look at it again, it's been a while since I've looked at it. I'd have to look at it, it's been a while.
Well, there, there's gotta be an out, though. If the city needs to cancel it for whatever reason in the future, right?
Yeah, I've gotta look at it again, it's admittedly been some time since I've looked at it.
If anybody remembers it, there was a.
Sorry?
There was a really cool bike park that got taken out with the Coyote Springs stuff over there. And I don't think it would have been a loud thing. That's why, that's why I'm throwing it out, like, it's a weird shape, and sometimes weird shapes are really cool for people to hand-maintain. And you get volunteers, and they'll do it. And you get homeowners, and they may not do it. So is there some other way? Is there something else we could think about that gives them, maybe we put the pressurized irrigation line flat, and they get everything north side of the straight line, and everything south side turns to some Parks Committee that maintains a walking path? Not our Parks Department, but some Parks Committee or something that maintains a very rustic walking path that you get into from the roundabout, that is very small by design and very quiet by design and very low maintenance by design. Do you know what I mean? Like, maybe it ends up with a couple of birdhouses, you know, those nesting boxes and stuff, where it's like, there's nothing to maintain. You can walk around and look at the flowers if you want to.
And the chief is only going to say that because it's on the backside of the berm, it's harder to patrol.
Sure.
Right? And that it would be more of a target, you know, for crime, given the darkness, given the back, you know, the secluded nature of it. So I think he would say that. Can we keep thinking about this?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Right now, it seems that everybody's still on go for fall, and we'll still have more time to discuss this, and Erin, you keep thinking of those ideas.
Still aligned with fall for, for having our Public Works people do it. That sounds great.
So the third item I have is an invitation from the Wasatch County Council. Let me read this to you. It's a communication item. The county council has an invitation to Heber City Council to meet on Thursday, June twelfth, at five or six PM at the Senior Center, purpose to meet periodically to discuss what is taking place in the community, including updates and communication on the Sitla Cushison property. Would council be available to meet? So they're asking if you're available June twelfth, which I think is a Thursday.
Yeah, but that's our HVSSD meeting for the three of us, and we could probably be there at seven, don't you think, for sure? I mean, we've got, we've got a big agenda, yeah. There's plenty of stuff to do.
I could be there at five or six.
Yeah, I will. I'll make it.
So seven, those, or you could get there?
Be sure, you know, maybe it'll be done by six thirty, I can never tell.
Okay, okay.
Eight of them to reach out.
So we'll let them know that you are available on the twelfth, but it's seven or later?
They only want to meet in the new community room with the fire station.
Yeah, that's nice, too.
That's nice, yeah. I like it.
I'd do, too, yeah.
So I'm gonna throw a wrench into that. Let's say if we don't do the ribbon cutting on the fifth, it might be moved to the twelfth. So.
That's true.
Matt, tell us that.
Think positively.
I know, and lunch is riding on it. We have a bet.
Thank you, Matt. Can we go into closed session?
I have one last thing. I'm trying to fit an email, but I'm not gonna spend any more time looking for it. We had the rodeo, Public Works Rodeo Monday, and I can tell you that Heber brought the gold home event, crossed the board, first, second, third. And we left no doubt. We left no doubt.
I mean, I was going to come, but my grandson was like not having it, so.
Russ didn't convene this year?
I was so, we need to start videotaping this. So those of us who can't come and see that, yeah, that's awesome.
New guy.
And it was with Midway.
It was, it was the district's Midway, it was with the county, number, number, number of entities.
This is just more of a question from a citizen, so this would be for Tony, and I guess it would be for Tony, maybe even Russ. So on thirteen thirty south, this is adjacent to my daughter's house, there's canal there, it's the Lake Creek Canal. So thirteen thirty south Industrial Way, you know how it comes like this? And there's a road, and then you have that canal. Okay, when they put in that project next door of the storage units, was there not a discussion, are they not supposed to return fencing in and around? They had taken the fencing away from the canal, they share that access point driveway, and there's no fencing around that area anymore around the canal. She tends my grandson every once in a while, too, and we've seen kids across the way where they have the black fence all the way around it. And we saw the boy, when we were looking at this and I was taking pictures, that ran to the side, and if that fence wouldn't have been there, mommy would not have been able to stop that little boy. Luckily, my grandson has not noticed it. All it takes is for him to see it once, and that's it. We've already had my dog, or dogs, running into the canal when it wasn't quite so high since that time. And it used to always have a fence there, and there is no longer a fence there, it's completely open.
You're saying the fence was down as part of that project?
Yeah, they did. I don't know if they were ever required to by the city to replace that fencing, if this is something that goes through the county, or who takes care of that, but it is right there on a family property, and it's open, and it's also open on the street, too, and it was supposed to have that replaced when there was an accident there, and it went right through the fencing, and they were told that it would get replaced, and neither of those have been replaced. So I've got pictures here, I mean, it's just.
If you, if you let me, send that to me, and we'll raise this as an issue at our lead meeting tomorrow. I'll report back to you.
I have a quick, quick question, too. It's, it will be, I think, quick. We got an email, I think everybody got it. Did everybody get the email from Nick Lopez this week?
This week?
Yeah, about the, about the. Fire hydrants?
No.
Oh, crap. If it was only me, hang on a second.
I got it.
You did?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, okay, so council, I'm sorry, you didn't get it. I did not realize it was just to me. That seems silly, but there we are. Yeah, it was just to me. Fantastic. I totally filled in forwarding it on. I'm gonna read it, then, because it's actually pretty quick, and I'm curious what the take is. So he says, good morning, I noticed in my neighborhood in front of my home that the city has placed locking devices and padlocks on the top of a fire hydrant. This is unacceptable and against fire code. They need to be removed immediately. I have sent a message to the fire chief, and he responded that he just found out about this, which means that his crew probably don't have keys on each, each and every one of their vehicles, and are not aware of how to, are not aware of them, or have received hands-on training on how to take them off quickly. This is irresponsible and a danger to our community. To remove them is just another time-consuming task for crews responding to a house fire. There should be no delays, no obstructions. This is a lawsuit waiting to happen, and hopefully not a loss of life or property. If the city is concerned about tractors or others accessing the water without a permit, then the city needs to heavily find the contractor and pull their, their future permits. This needs to have this, this needs to have this issue, sorry, that, but this is grammar. This needs to have this issue resolved in serious discussions and fines with those that tamper with or steal the water. For the safety of our community, I would like them removed today. I did not realize it was only to me, so certainly, it didn't happen on May fifteenth, I didn't notice it.
I, I got the same thing. So let me provide you the context. So first, Russ mentioned earlier that we have thirty percent water loss. We have been searching diligently for the reasons behind that. We believe that theft is a big reason for a lot of it. In fact, we have found the contractor at this new school site, be a big culprit. We found contractors at other major sites, a big part of this, and we believe that with these locks, we'll be able to hopefully get that more under control. Now, the fire department, I did find out that, yes, the fire chief didn't know until last week, but his staff did. My staff had been working with his staff. They are looking at putting what they call practices in place. So when they pull up to a hydrant, they know what they gotta do to get the lock off, they know about it, they're prepared for it, and they understand it. And soaps, that's what the word is looking for. And so they're aware of it, they support it, they understand why we're doing it, and the fire department is knowledgeable about it, and so is the chief now. In fact, the chief told me that he had to buy special equipment, and I said, you'll give me the incentives, I'll pay for it, and he says, not an issue, we'll, we'll handle it.
Can the chief, or both, respond to Nick?
He's been trying to drop by my office, and we just haven't connected, but I will get with him.
If, if you do, I just forward this, council, I just forward it, just since you have it. And then, I'm just saying, if you have it in an email.
Yep.
We, we know we responded, if that makes sense.
No, no. The main issue is make sure the fire department is A, aware of it, that they have their practices ready, they have it ready. It'd be one thing to show up and not know about it and then be surprised. It's quite another to be completely ready, which they are. I spoke with the chief personally. They're knowledgeable and they're ready for it.
I'm sure that the wording here about you're breaking a law is, is just energy behind trying to protect people and, and.
Nick's a firefighter.
He's a firefighter by trade.
He's a firefighter. He gets this. He has a firsthand role in it. Nope.
Okay. I probably should say that Erin is going to give a speech at the Monuments of America next week while I'm out of town to my son's graduation. And Yvonne, as well as Kendall Crittenen, are going to the governor's office next week for a housing summit meeting. I figured that the housing authority needed to be there and see what is, what we're being told, what the options are, and get them hopefully moving in that direction, but Yvonne will report back to us. Have fun.
Thank you.
See the gov.
The governor's mansion. Yep. Is anybody ready to go into closed session for pending litigation or purchase exchange lease of real property? Are you making a motion? Thank you.
Going into closed session.
Thank you, for those reasons.
For those reasons.
Thank you, Erin.
And what?
Also pending an imminent litigation.
Yeah, I, I had said that, litigation, and then I said property. Okay, for those reasons. Thank you, thank you.
Sid, can we start with you on the vote?
Yes.
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 That passes four to zero with one excused. Okay, let's just wait a touch until Trina.
I'll second.
This was the motion, this was the second.
Erin.
You. Thank you for attending, everyone. Well, I heard him, so I, I'm sorry, Sid, I didn't hear you.
You're fine, no, that's. Yeah, yeah.
He is. He's sad about it. Did you get it?
What's up?
Those two pictures.
Yeah. So we got two items, I'm gonna, Russ, sorry.
We're not done.
Trina, have you had a lot of people come talk to you about for candidacy?
It's still open, Trina. Trina, it's still open. Do you want, do you want Tony to close out the meeting?